I need a historical perspective. You're not, man. I don't do this, but I need that.
We just started this, uh, right... It's Rockland's files at the office. You get them every three. Oh my God, you've got the whole page.
It's on Facebook there. And it's on YouTube.
I can tell. Normally, there's about five people. At least, not the last one of the last one of the last...
I take it you're seeing me?
I'd like to, uh, tell the meeting of December, Bodatuck County, Board Supervisors Meeting, and I'd like to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas. Here's gone by so fast. Seems like it's just a month or two ago since we started out the year. Did my mic come? No, well, did everybody hear me? All right, well, yes. Well, I was just calling to order again. And, uh, just welcome everybody to the December two thousand nineteen Bodatuck County Board Supervisors Meeting. Again, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. It, uh, is that time of year again, and as I said, it's gone by so fast. I'd like to bring the, bring back orders. Would you, uh, Dr. Scott Horn, bring us back here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It resolves that the Board members knowledge calling public business matters lawfully exempted from the holding meetings, departments, and calling such matters as were identified in the motion to go into closed session for rehearsed, discussed, or considered during the closed session.
Second. Agree. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'd like for everyone, if you would, stand and be, um, with me, the ladies and the leaders. The ladies and the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of any and all. Thank you. Please stand where I can have a moment of silence. It's our government, let us have prayer and end in Jesus' name. We just want to have a moment of silence, and if you want to pray here at that time, you're welcome to. I'll just meditate what I want to say. All right, thank you. At this time, I have a resolution, a presentation from the Lord Bodatuck High School Girls Volleyball Team. And if we could get those young ladies to come in. They look like they're ready to play volleyball again, aren't they? Well, I'd like to read this proclamation. You guys have done an outstanding job on the volleyball team this year, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the Lord Bodatuck High School Girls varsity volleyball team from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty consists of Megan Barnes, Leah Carlton, Brianna Clark, Anna Deweese, Kenley Gunter, Parker Hudson, Jordan Kepler, Taylor Robertson, Yeth Feldman, Cindy Worley, and Annalise... Oh, I got that right. Assistant coaches Michelle Bauer and Samantha Wilkinson, head coach Julie Connor. And whereas the team's season record consisted of thirty-one wins and no losses, including the state class-three championship win over Dog High School. And whereas, over three state championship sessions, the team accumulated a record of ninety-four wins and one loss, which included a fifty-six match winning streak. And whereas their talent, talent and dedication to the game of their teammates are to be commended. And whereas, they have a proven record of excellence which serves as a model for their peers and the community and is worthy of recognition. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board Supervisors of Bodatuck County, on its own behalf and on behalf of the citizens of Bodatuck County, extends its congratulations and appreciation to the members of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Lord Bodatuck High School Girls Varsity Volleyball Team. Assistant coaches Michelle Bauer and Samantha Wilkinson, and head coach Julie Connor for winning the Class Three Girls State Championship in November two thousand and nineteen. Congratulations, ladies. And I'll present this to you, and, uh, I didn't know it had a big smile, because y'all wanted it. Okay, thank you. Got it? Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations. Well, yeah, I'm walking. Do you want to end it? Okay, sorry. We have several more, um, resolutions today. The next was a proclamation to Rodney Spicker. He's leading as Commissioner of Revenue, and I guess he'll go back to work somewhere else. I don't know, maybe he will be dealt with. Rodney, congratulations. And, uh, I would like to read this proclamation due, I'm not sure which way to get there, but this is to Rodney Spicker. Whereas Rodney Spicker has served as the Bodatuck County Commissioner of Revenue from January two thousand eleven, reduced to December two thousand nineteen. And whereas during his tenure, Commissioner Spicker has provided fair and unwavering service to the citizens and businesses of Bodatuck County for real estate and personal property assessments, tax return preparation, business licenses, community education, and myriad other requests. And whereas Commissioner Spicker also helped to oversee the county's two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty general property reassessments. And whereas Commissioner Spicker is respected by his colleagues for his leadership, passion, and vision to provide the highest level of service to the county and his staff. And whereas the county, its citizens, and the Commissioner of Revenue staff gratefully acknowledge the dedication and experience of Commissioner Spicker. And now therefore, it is resolved that the Bodatuck County Board Supervisors here right by expresses its sincere appreciation for the eight years of service given by Commissioner of Revenue Rodney D. Spicker to the citizens, businesses, and visitors of Bodatuck County. And further, the Board wishes Commissioner Spicker all the best in his future endeavors. Again, the county would also like to present you with a wristwatch from the county, beautiful watch. So we'd like to give this to you as a little reminder of the time you spent here, and thank you again for your service. Okay, and the next one is the High Sheriff of Bodatuck County, Ronnie Sprinkle. Is he here? Here he is. Sheriff Sprinkle, congratulations. How's it feel?
It's good.
Well, we have a proclamation here that we'd like to, uh, present to you and read to you, and it says, whereas Ronnie and Sprinkle will retire, will retire on December the thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. After twenty years of service as sheriff in Bodatuck County, plus eleven years of previous service as a county deputy. And whereas his tenure as sheriff, uh, during his tenure, Sheriff Sprinkle helped to grow the Bodatuck County Sheriff's Office into a superior full-service law enforcement agency, expanding services, increasing deputy salaries, and ensuring the public safety throughout the county. And whereas Sheriff Sprinkle helped to oversee the partnership of Craig County to build and operate the Bodatuck, Craig County's public safety building. And whereas, under Sheriff Sprinkle's guidance, the Bodatuck County Sheriff's Office has achieved accreditation, accreditation from the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. And whereas Sheriff Sprinkle is respected by his colleagues for his leadership, passion, and vision to provide the highest level of law enforcement and public safety service to the county. And whereas the county's Sheriff's Office staff and the county's citizens gratefully acknowledge his experience, knowledge, and dedication to the Bodatuck County Sheriff's Office. And now there, now therefore, it is resolved that the Bodatuck County Board Supervisors here right expresses its sincere appreciation for the more than thirty years of service, it's a good long time, honey, uh, given by Sheriff Ronnie and Sprinkle for citizens, businesses, and visitors of Bodatuck County. And further, the Board wishes Sheriff Sprinkle all the best in his retirement. Congratulations, Ronnie. I think I have a beautiful wristwatch. I don't know if you're, my favorite, beautiful watch. For presenting Ronnie, uh, you remember, it's been a long time here in Bodatuck County. You know, if you're Sprinkle named in the Sheriff Department, almost a lifetime here in Bodatuck County. We want to miss you, and we appreciate all you did. And, uh, I think Jerry Burgess has something he wanted to say too.
Mr. Martin, I appreciate the opportunity, I really do. I had good fortune, uh, to serve with Ronnie for thirteen and a half years, as the sheriff, I was getting here. It was an incredible partnership. I saw him literally transform Bodatuck County Sheriff's Office. Physically, most important, because when he arrived, to say their facilities were inactive was criminal, looking for proof. The new building would not be possible without Sheriff Sprinkle. Going to the state board's directions to convince them to fund twelve million dollars to that scope. For two, but count not three, was a miracle. Ronnie, I appreciate everything you did that time. Always said we had to provide this law enforcement to the state, and I believe that to this day.
I would just want to say something too, is Judge Gilligan.
Yep.
Judge, did you want to say something too?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, one, one thing I'd like to say is, uh, of course, you know, I did this, I did that. There are other people here that helped me, named Jerry Burgess, one, the county staff, three, uh, county administrators that have been under, uh, present boards, past boards. You can do these things without support from them. I do appreciate that. And Senator Bo Trumpo helped us a great deal, uh, with a lot of the stuff that came out of Richmond, uh, seventeen or eighteen years ago. So I couldn't leave without at least thanking these folks for helping me, and I appreciate you all for helping us also. I hope you best fly to county in the future. Thank you.
You always hate to see employees leave. Get used to them, seeing them every time, come down here. That's what they work for, so they can have a good retirement when they finish their tour of duty. So we wish them all well in their new endeavors. Okay, at this time, I have a few comments that I would like to make. I gotta have a few comments I have to make. Was this, is this yours? All right, part of the middle flow. I'd like for you to thank all of us for being here in attendance today. I am Billy Barton, I'm Chair of the Bodatuck County Board Supervisors. And, uh, we, uh, will be following the agenda as presented and have a few pieces of business to take care of prior to the public comment period. And during the public comment period, you may speak about topics of your concern for three minutes. We allow three minutes. And I would suspect some of you may have come to oppose or support a particular item that may be later in the agenda. And with this being said, I wish to remind you that the Board Supervisors will not be voting on a final decision in particular, uh, in particular to item twelve on the agenda of Apex. And once we get through the recognition, the public comment period will begin, and, uh, we will, uh, ask, uh, people to sign in if they want to speak. If you want to sign in, you need to sign the, uh, the request here that, uh, this, this pain has to, uh, speak. Now, before we start with citizen comments, I would like to remind the citizens that we plan to hold a civil meeting here today. On a general safety item, we have a limit of folks who can be in this room due to capacity. And I would ask that you not stand on the steps or block the entrances. If we need additional space, we will open an overflow room down the hall where folks will be able to, to, uh, see the meeting. And as previously, previously stated, please sign in to speak. And I would also make it clear that the meeting today is only the beginning of any process with regard to agenda item number twelve. Again, that's Apex. And yet, and other than today, there will be a multiple times for public comments if the Board decides to take any actions at all. Also, today is not a public hearing. And if the item moves forward, there will be appropriate public hearings in the future. Also, we should make you aware that no Board decisions have been made on any of the agenda items. We take pride in the fact that the Board Supervisors' actions are based on the very public and legal process. We are here to learn and to properly process any items that come before the Board Supervisors. And we are proud to uphold the First Amendment of free speech. And would ask that citizens be respectful of all speakers. The speakers are limited to three minutes and will be asked to sit down if the time is exceeded. If you plan to repeat a previous speaker's comments, I would ask that you say so to reduce the total time of the meeting. And we will note that your comments are similar to previous comments in a minute. And as a piece of additional information, I have chosen to vary from the normal for the Board Supervisors' meeting today. Normally, there would be no comments allowed at the four o'clock session, and it's not listed on the agenda. However, due to the gravity of issues, I will allow comments, uh, at our four o'clock, uh, meeting today under the same terms as I have just stated, uh, for the four o'clock meeting today. What I am saying is that on topic twelve, I will accept comments during the public comment period, if you have a few minutes, or at four o'clock. But I will not allow the same person to speak multiple times when you've got one time to speak. And now I will ask our county attorney to, uh, detail the process of item twelve, so as to be clear, and then we will move into the public comment period. Mr. Longkaby, would you, uh, please give us the process of the idea of...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, item twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, they actually go together. Twelve is a presentation from Apex Clean Energy. That is an update on the progress of their project, which Apex has asked to give to the Board. Thirteen is to consider a request for the Board to consider changing the zoning ordinance text. This is the first step of making a change to the text of the ordinance. Now, any citizen of the county or business operating in the county may petition the Board Supervisors, which is simply a First Amendment right to petition your own individual to make a change to the zoning ordinance. Once that petition is made to the Board Supervisors, the Board Supervisors refers that item to county staff and to the county planning commission. The county staff and the county planning commission can make changes to that text. The planning commission will hold at least one public hearing on that text. And then they may make changes, and then that may come to the Board Supervisors later for another public hearing, and the Board Supervisors may make changes. So on the text amendments, that will come to, that if that actually goes anywhere, that would go to public hearing twice. And those would be opportunities for all people to come and speak to, uh, the planning commission and then the Board Supervisors. It's important to know that text amendments do not allow any project to occur. They merely open the path for a project to potentially occur somewhere in the county. They are broadly applicable to the entire county and, uh, do not apply to any particular project. We are not here to consider, uh, the Rocky Forge Project in any way, shape, or form with respect to the text amendments. That is a separate item called a special exception permit, which has been filed but is not yet complete and may, has not, and may not, and may not, depending on how the text amendments work out, ever come up with consideration. Item fourteen is consideration of consultant engineering services for review of, of an application. That's the special exception permit which has been filed but does not yet complete. And the question is whether staff will engage an expert in wind energy and its, uh, technical, financial, and environmental impacts to assist them in evaluating the application filed by Apex Clean Energy for a special exception permit. As I just mentioned, the special exception permit might or might not follow along with the text amendments. If the Board decides today to consider the text amendments, and depending on what comes out of the process before the planning commission and the Board Supervisors on those text amendments. I hope that that clarifies things somewhat, Mr. Chairman. Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I have, uh, if anyone on the board had any questions before proceeding with the comment period. Okay, uh, Governor Austin, I, what I saw, Supervisor Ray said that you wanted to speak. I overlooked that. I apologize. Did you have anything you want to say now before we get started?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll speak during the comment session.
Okay.
I, I would like to say that I commend the, uh, board of Bonneton County, all of them. And I will be, uh, putting in a resolution of commendation for their success. This is, as you know, their third year as state champion. And I just explained to them outside that they should be putting that forward, and I would have it after session, but we're very proud of their accomplishments.
I didn't have sex with that. My wife fixed it anyway, so maybe that'll make that.
As long as Maggie's taking care of you.
All right, first speaker would be Stevie Lovell. Come forth to the podium, please. Give us your name and your address and, uh, make your comments.
Thank you all so much, and thank you for, uh, my name is, uh, Randolph Steven Lovell. Uh, I'm in Cobirdale, forty-seven eighty-seven Reed Down Road. And, uh, it's under due business, but I just kind of happened in on the wind farm or the business of the mill, and I would like to want to record that I'm in support of anything new with technology and whatever you all do with that, or county. Let's see, what I was going to bring to y'all's attention today, and I'll do it as brief as possible because I may have got a room full. But, uh, I would ask the board to acknowledge, uh, pre-existing and non-conforming businesses. And my definition of those are grandfather businesses that have been here, indigenous businesses. And I fall as one of those, and so does, uh, a, a good friend of mine, Howard Pulling. He falls under. And I think Clayton and several other places do, and it's a, it's a tou- touchy subject. The towing and storage, I know that we have the gateway up here, we call it, where people come into our county. And, uh, and, you know, we want to make it as attractive as possible, but what we do is, um, is a necessity. I was up this morning right early on the interstate with a couple tractor trailer wrecks, helping do that. As a part of that was one of my calls that I get. And, uh, I think a letter was sent to you all, uh, that said that maybe that my zoning isn't in compliance. And, and I, I disagree with that, but I just want to, just, like I said, make an acknowledgement with you all, just such as start some kind of process of this, and then, and I've done just a little bit of research, and I don't mean, I'm not going to quote law because I do know law, but, uh, it says that zoning shall not be burdensome, or no, or shall not be, it shall, shall be compatible and not burdensome. And the same thing about the windmill. I don't know if we've got a lot of people for it or against it, but I'm definitely for it. We're not a rural county anymore. And, uh, my business has definitely had a great impact. I pay my business tax. Uh, it's, I've, I've, I've done real well in Bonneton County. I've been here fifty-six years. So I'll just, uh, yield my time back and just, uh, let y'all go on to your regular business. And then, uh, I do have something I want to give out to you all also. And then I'll get back in my seat and let y'all conduct your business, but if y'all would give some consideration after the first year about, uh, the, uh, pre-existing and, um, conforming businesses, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. And, uh, thank you, sir. And the next speaker is Wendy St. Clair. Wendy St. Clair.
My name is Wendy St. Clair. I live at one eight four nine seven Bonneton Road, Eagle Rock. And I'm right across from North Mountain, where these turbines are located. And I have concerns about the environment, my property values, and health of the people that live near these turbines. I don't think there's enough evidence to support that the wind is there to produce energy in the amount that will help a lot. So I think that that needs to be looked at, and that we need to have the opportunity to get more information and have meetings at times with attendees. I haven't been to the pool, but something I'm telling for. But I think that these are real concerns. It needs to be considered.
Thank you, Ms. St. Clair. The next speaker is Alan Brown.
I speak for.
Alan Brown.
I speak for.
Oh, yes, sir, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Uh, Park Slater.
Good afternoon, my name is Park Slater. I live at ten thirty-one Fort Horn Road in Finn Castle. I'm here to speak in opposition to the plan for the Rocky Ford Wind Turbine Project. The photograph I just gave you is from the Apex Energy website, taken from the field at Central Academy. If you blow that picture up, which we have done, this is what it actually looks like. Picture on the website does not show any wind turbines there. The problem also for me is this. That is my view. Wiping up purchased piece of property, and we look directly at, uh, North Mountain. Um, we purchased a house where we mentally enjoy looking at creation, and sometimes there are any changes of the landscape, and the eagles are often frequent there. I, I do say, I do respect a landowner's right to do with his property as he wishes, but at the same time, I'm greatly concerned. This is all, not all about money. I recall, uh, Luke Bryan wrote a song we're all familiar with, "Hunting, Fishing, and Loving Each Day." There's a line in that that comes to mind. He said, talks about being a red dirt rich, getting Flint River pay. That's body type, at least the northern end of it. I do not envy you all's job as members of the board supervisors to find a stream of revenue to make the county function. At the same time, I also realize that governments can't have an insatiable drive for revenue and, and for taxes. What will this get us, though? The best that Apex can offer right now, according to their website, their best estimate is two hundred and fifty temporary construction jobs of some variety, and at the end, seven permanent ones, all while we watch the wind turbines. One of body top's greatest attractions is the wildness of the north end, the Eagle Rock area. Once this project goes forward, there, there's really no turning back. Then there are the bats. In order to save the bats, the wind turbines have to be cut off at dark. But what about the eagles and other birds? You have three blades on each of, call it twenty-two wind turbines that they're projecting. That's sixty-six blade tips turning at somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty miles an hour. What about the eagles? Eagle Rock will have to rename their community because of bird's prey. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service estimates that up to half a million, uh, birds are killed each year by these. We know that Apex is now already asking for modifications, and then more species will come. Think of it this way. What if these were proposed on McAfee Knott? Already get, in lieu of the Mill Mountain Star? Of course, you must realize that these turbines will each be between six and seven times the height of the Mill Mountain Star. And those don't want, but they're twenty. Finally, it was a good idea, then the government would not have promised to buy this electricity, let the technology stay on some. Offshore turbines are the best place for these things to be. And I ask you to keep quiet, uh, red dirt rich. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Next speaker is Darlene Scarborough.
Good afternoon. My name is Darlene Scarborough, and I live at five thirty-two Locust Bottom Road in Eagle Rock. My family and I bought property in Eagle Rock in February of two thousand seventeen. At the time, we had no idea that the Rocky Ford Wind Farm was anything. We, we had actually no idea. I told this recently. Had we known, most likely, we'd not, we'd not have bought the property. Uh, we, we currently travel almost an hour to get to work because we love the beauty of the area that we live in. And we also have a view of North Mountain. So I am obviously opposed to the blue label of any sort of this wind farm, especially to increase the height of turbines. Basically, uh, one of the main reasons people love that, that part of the country is because of the beauty. And to put these up there would just be travesty. Not only because of our view, everyone else's, that, that comes back and forth sees it. People that are on the James River, it's all about recreation, and they come here for a reason. Not, not to mention the fact that, like was mentioned before, we don't have any proof that the wind is actually even sustainable to make this viable. So I'm dismayed that, that the county thinks that this is a viable source of energy. Um, and I feel the citizens are not being informed about the negative impact this will have on our health, that of the animals, the destruction of the mountains, name just a few. There needs to be much more time spent to listen to the experts and other people that have had wind farms go up by eight pipes and the resulting devastation that it has caused to them and their properties all over the country. I implore the county supervisors to step back and realize that this should not be approved and fulfill their responsibility to keep their commitment as stated in Bonneton County's comprehensive plan, which states, and I'll quote, "Preserving scenic views and vistas is particularly important for Bonneton County. The county scenery is critical to the role of character and is one of its most distinguishing, distinguishing features. The Blue Ridge Mountains are a national attraction and derive their popularity from spectacular views. So in conclusion, the local beauty of this area produces valuable economic impact now. Directing six hundred and eighty-foot-tall man-made structures destroys the natural beauty. And these proposed turbines will be visible from the Blue Ridge Parkway. Please do the right thing and stop this from happening at all."
Thank you, Ms. Scarborough. Next speaker is John Scarborough.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Um, so I have to disagree with, uh, the one speaker. Uh, we are still a rural county.
Could you give us your name and your address?
Yeah, John Scarborough, five thirty-two Locust Bottom Road, uh, Eagle Rock. You just heard from my wife. Uh, we bought a piece of property, a large property, um, something we've worked our whole life for. Uh, these wind turbines are going to reduce the value of my property. It's going to destroy all the equity I have in it. It's essentially, I won't be able to sell. Uh, one fear I have, uh, is if I lose my job and have to lose the air, leave the area, I can't sell my home. I can't, I won't be able to sell it. And if I do, I'm going to take a huge loss. I won't have a payment on another home. This is, uh, this is critical to us. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know, you know, it's this, uh, the, the people I see that, that are for this, are they within the view of this thing? Are their property values being affected? I'll ask the board. Are any of your properties being affected? I sent you an email this week. I didn't get a response from anyone. But I did send you an email with a lot of evidence. And, you know, do any of you, do any of you have property that's going to be affected? I don't think so. I know I spoke to several of you, and you, you indicated no. Um, so everything I've worked my whole life for is in jeopardy because we want to have windmills. Is everyone aware that, uh, our governor wants to raise two point five billion over ten years? He's going to do that by raising our electricity tax. It's to pay for this sort of thing. It's to pay for the tax breaks. Is everyone aware that, uh, other wind companies, they go in and they dispute their, their tax bills? They try to get them reduced. Whatever you're being promised is not what you're going to get. Right? You're, you're grasping at a shiny object at this point. I think it's another gentleman mentioned that money isn't everything. You know, our home and our property means everything to us. And, and, you know, uh, you guys are just, it, it, the, the potential is there that you're going to destroy. Destroy us and destroy our families. You know, and, and, uh, I guess that's really all I have to say. It's just, um, I feel like, I really feel like, uh, you guys have probably made up your minds. I think this is going to go to the planning commission and to the text amendment. I think, I really do. Um, I also would like to, I'd like for everyone to understand that, you know, you guys have been meeting with Apex since the summer, but you met with no, no opposition at all. No opposition. I know some of you are intending to go visit Apex. And I also know that you don't take more than two supervisors with you, so it's not a matter of public record. So where is the due process for the opposition? I have ten seconds left. I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scarborough. Next, uh, speaker is Eric Scarborough. That would be ten one, that's your son. Yeah, that's my son. Come on down, Eric.
My name is Eric Scarborough. I live at five thirty-two Locust Bottom Road. Um, obviously, down there near my parents. And I didn't really have a speech or anything prepared, but I just wanted to make it known that I'm opposed to this wind farm because it will destroy our property values and, uh, destroy the value of the land that I was hoping to inherit and live there hopefully the rest of my life, but this wind farm just kind of makes me want to flee Bonneton, you know? And, um, I don't know. I think it's just going to push people away and destroy the environment, and I just don't think it's all it's cracked up to be.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, next speaker is Governor Austin. Jerry Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, members of the board, thank you. I appreciate the privilege to speak before you today. County administration, Ms. Susan Fane, probably the most dedicated employee Bonneton County ever had. So Susan, thank you for your service. Um, I appreciate the privilege to be here before you today. I'm Cherry Austin, one seven two one five Lee Highway, Spokane, Virginia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I sat in the seat that you all were sitting in probably six or seven years ago. This proposal was first brought before the county. And, uh, we considered it quite conscientiously and in advance. There have been wind studies done to prove that the wind is there to sustain the power generation. And finally, this project has gotten to a point in time where there's been a power purchase agreement. And that will now allow the project to fast forward if you all so desire. I feel this is a real opportunity. Uh, it's, most recently, Virginia was successful in recruiting Amazon to come to Virginia, Golden, Virginia. And part of the requirement of Amazon coming to Virginia was that they have, that we have green energy. And more and more of our industries today are requiring that. And I think this project, with Bonneton County on map, it will help us recruit future industries here because we are forward-thinking and progressive, and we do have sustainable energy through the wind projects. So I support the project. I, uh, I feel the project has very little impact on our infrastructure. It has no impact on our schools, our roads, and very little on our emergency services. The property is located in a mountainous terrain. Current use is probably just passive recreation or hunting. It's going to have a very small footprint, and it makes very little impact on our services here in the county. It will create a few jobs, uh, and, and some of those jobs are sustainable, long-term jobs. Not a lot, but they are jobs. And, uh, Daniel Lancaster, many years ago, started a wind turbine, uh, curriculum that supports the infrastructure that will be put in place. And I think that's important also. So gentlemen, I just ask you to look favorably upon this project. I think it's an asset. I think it does, and as with any project, have liabilities. And the people's concerns are legitimate, and I respect and understand those. But I think we also have to be forward-thinking and progressive as a county, and we have been very progressive. We've been very successful here in American Development. Uh, we've looked upon very favorably in our region. But I think this is an opportunity for us to lead the way. This would be the first inbound. This would be the first inbound wind project in the Commonwealth of Virginia. My wife and I just recently traveled out to Montana and Colorado, Wyoming, and we saw multiple wind projects along the way. Most of those right in the Midwest were flat topography. I can understand the some of the concerns associated if you live close to those projects. This project is on approximately ten thousand acres of land and on top of the mountain. So I don't see the impacts here that they probably could experience out there. So once again, I thank you for your time. I wish you each of you a happy holiday. I thank you for what you do for Bonnetot County. Your service is very well-respected and very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker today is Kevin Condon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Kevin Condon, fifty-five point McKennie Hollow Road, Eagle Rock. Where from my house, we have literally twenty-five degree views of the mountains. So we see the military aircraft, which consists of various helicopters, fighter jets, thirty-fives, twenty-twos, eighteen's, fifteen's, sixteen's, even low-flying C-117s that were seen four, about four hundred and fifty feet above US 220 flying low level below my house. So I see them all. Nighttime is when most of them traverse through the region. A lot of them come down North Mountain, headed south, and then at the end of South Mountain, uh, the south, they bear off and go over towards Covington or West Virginia. That's their flight path. Now, flight paths can always be changed. The original project was in favor of, but this addition of a hundred and thirty-three feet was detrimental to the safety and the health of civilian and military aircraft. It takes one incident. Now, I am for safety of aviation. Unfortunately, in nineteen sixty-one, a pilot was killed in a helicopter due to a power company or utility given out the MARE over in the Gailup region. That pilot had been through Forward Two, he is credited with advocating the use and maintenance of helicopters to the United States Army with MARE. The other is, so it's low-level flying is the concern of military and civilian pilots. Regardless, they're going to be flying sometimes at night. One flew faster than the speed of sound, which the sheriff of this county could not figure out what it was, same with the allegations. So for that reason, gentlemen, a lot. And my other fear is the terrain of North Mountain is the same as down in Tennessee where the fires happened. And a fear that if you have an extreme fire there, it could destabilize the soils, creating a hazard to the environment and safety of nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Next speaker is Ed Badness, B-A-D-N-E-S-S. I think I've got that right.
One old man. I'm Ed Badness from two ten Windmill Lane, Eagle Rock, Virginia. And back some time ago, we had the opportunity to name our street, and I chose Windmill Lane with that vision in mind. The turbines will be taller. The update permit means there will be. Sure of them, allowing the project to generate the same amount of electricity with less turbines. This will allow the vast majority of the mountain to remain wild and undeveloped. We hear a lot of negative recent things. Recently, there was a mailer from the opposing side, but not a single argument for the benefits of the revenue from this project. The economical impact will be in the millions of dollars for the county. The great thing is the county has zero dollars invested. Building this project also would bring millions of dollars into our county economy. I am in support of, or in support of local companies, contractors, and equipment suppliers. I ask you to support the development, making it a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Badness. Next speaker is Bob Huntley. Bob Huntley.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Oh. The Rocky Gap project would be-
Sir, if you could give your name and your address.
Oh, my name is Bob Huntley, eight oh five Vernon Road, Eagle Rock, Virginia. The Rocky Gap project would be a danger to the three, oh, three-count county area because a fog file, when it burns up a steep high mountain, it burns at amazing speed, at the fastest the wind can go. And when it reaches the top of that mountain and hits all that oxygen on top, it, what occurs is what they call a crown file. And all that heat and flames explodes. Now, if you have an industrial site, three miles across the top of North Mountain, and such occurrence hits the top, every more wood is going up into the air to be carried by the wind to drop into mountain watershed full of dead ash trees, thanks to the Asian ash ball that has infected these mountains. Now, that tree is given its name because it burns so hot, all's left is white ash. Now, a crown file occurred on top of Sheath Mountain back in the late summer of nineteen seventy, and Owens in Illinois, Big Island crew member lost his wife. Now, California have had wind turbines for a good while. Well, they had any factor in all the disastrous files that happened in the mountains of California, you will not learn from the power monopoly which had them put up there. And they lost a town named Paradise. I suppose it must have been a nice place. But, oh, after the elimination of all these California mountain, middle-class homes, I suppose the price of California mountain land is a lot cheaper and more available. File has been used as a social tool, as a social planning tool throughout this country's history. I have one more sentence.
Okay.
In the mid seventeen hundreds, a British philosopher named Adam Smith predicted that the British Empire would lose their American colonies because the British Parliament allowed British merchants for certain profit to overcome frauds. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huntley. Our next speaker is Kenny Muggs, M-U-D-G-E. I'll look at that right.
Can you speak at four?
Four o'clock, yes, ma'am. That'll be fine.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. R.D. Blanton, the third. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Robert Dewey Blanton, the third. My address is one nine three seven Shavers Farm Road, Pink House, Virginia, two four oh nine oh. I would like to say something about the wind farm near Eagle Rock. I think it's dangerous in a way because I'm afraid it could help start forest fires if something goes wrong, malfunctioning. And I feel sorry for the people that have lived here, got land near it, and I'm afraid it's going to ruin the value of their property. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blanton. Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Launch.
May I leave in a little bit more?
Yes. Gene Launch, you're on the way to.
Yes, please.
Okay. Should be able to figure it out. Bill Van Velsor. Bill Van Velsor.
Yes. My name is Bill Van Velsor. I live at three ninety-three Cox Road, Rockville, Virginia, two four one seven five. So here we go again. However, this time it's worse. So what's the lesser of two evils? Twenty-five, five hundred and fifty-foot-high wind turbines and associated destruction, all within a forest conservation district, no less? Or twenty-two, six hundred and eighty-foot-high turbines? We should remember that the original turbine height, turbine height we heard from Apex was five hundred feet. So now we've gone from five hundred feet to five hundred and fifty feet, and now it's six hundred and eighty feet. It would seem the way out to give Apex all that it's asking for right here and now because they're going to start logging from seven hundred and fifty feet of millimeter. This is the same bait and switch that I've seen before in Southern California, of which I am a native. I'm sure it's happened elsewhere. It's a common tactic used by wind industry when it thinks no one's paying attention. Well, some of us are paying attention. And we were paying attention four years ago. Opponents of this project submitted a long list of issues with a special focus on just three. Reputable studies that quantify the decline in real estate values relative to view sheds and distances from wind turbine facilities. These figures constitute nothing less than a fact. Two, hard, quantifiable evidence of infrasound, which although Apex and wind industry generally refuses to recognize, is now, as of last year, recognized by no less than the World Health Organization. This development alone should be more than enough to cause our board of supervisors and planning commission to completely rework the dangerously inadequate setbacks in our current county wind ordinance. Three, compelling documentation regarding the wind industry's dismissal of avian and bat mortalities with such ridiculous claims that cats kill more birds than do wind turbines. When was the last time anyone saw a cat bring down an eagle, a hawk, or a falcon? These issues and many others are entirely justified at five hundred and fifty feet. The six hundred and eighty-foot turbines we're now talking about constitute an altogether different situation with an altogether different response. The Bonnetot County Wind Ordinance is special exception for that log of the DEQ and FDA assessments are now outdated, and the committee process should begin anew. I understand the board is under a tremendous amount, tremendous amount of political pressure from outside of the county. I get this. I truly sympathize. I do. But we elected supervisors to represent us and our interests, not those interests outside of the county. This is our home. Please protect our constitutional rights to freedom, to pursuit of whatever our happiness means to us.
Thank you, Mr. Van Velsor. Next speaker is Alvin Henry.
Hi, I'm Melissa Huntley from Clinton Forge. But my family land is just north of Rocky Forge Project, eleven eighty-three Cliffs Bottom Road. My mom's house and our family's home are arguably the closest occupied homes to the project. The land and the three miles of streams protected by land and water conservation easements. Rocky Forge will destroy the hunting possibilities on my family's property because of the audible and inaudible noise which drive away the wildlife. It will destroy the creek that runs through my family's front yard with silt and runoff muddying what was always a clear stream before. It will permanently destroy the mountain's ecology by clear-cutting trees on more than a hundred acres, blasting off mountain tops to create suitable foundations for these turbines and making unpaid roads that will wash into the streams below. Birds and bats will be chewed up by the turbine blades, including golden eagles, which soar along this ridge. Apex has said it's not a likely occurrence, so they won't mind if the county protects itself. To offset this crime against nature, I ask the county to require Apex to pay the county a fine of ten thousand dollars for every eagle, indiana, and little ground bat harmed by or killed by this project. Killing eagles and bats are a federal crime. Why should the county give a business pass to destroy the wildlife you treasure without a significant penalty to compensate for their loss? I read Apex changes they propose. I am not in favor of increasing the turbine height to six hundred and eighty feet, the largest in the world on land. I noticed that Apex performed their sounded shadow flicker evaluation using two different turbine models, the GE one fifty-eight and the Vestas V one six-two. Apex claims that both types are under consideration, but they have a gall to say, but the applicant is not committed to a particular manufacturer or model at this time. This means any sound study and shadow flicker study evaluations provided to the county are meaningless. If Apex refuses to provide the county with exact turbine manufacturers and models they plan to use, including actual sound and flicker measurements from identical turbines in operation, please deny them. As a man said from the Roanoke Sierra Club, "You've got to get your first wind farm first. This won't be the last. Maybe the next one will be in your backyard." Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. David, thank you for this part. You can relax. I hope the others read it. I didn't get any response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huntley. Next speaker. Thank you, Ms. Huntley. Next speaker is John Cooper.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Cooper, five three five Holly Mead Lane, Belleville, Virginia. I'm a husband, a father, a business owner, entrepreneur, and a member of the Fraley family. Now, my uncle Jerry bought this property back in the late eighties. He never dreamed of the amount of impact it would have on people's lives. I've seen folks from all backgrounds, ethnicities, come together and enjoy God's beautiful creation on North Mountain. Bottotack County has a tremendous resource at its disposal. As a business owner and leader, I am tasked with finding new revenue streams that flow into my business to fund future operations and growth. As a board of supervisors member, that too is in your job description. You've all seen this property, been on it. Ten thousand contiguous acres. The closest landowner to any of the proposed tower locations is over one point three miles away, Mr. Henry Gumm. And he said on the record, and I quote, "They could put one of those things up in my front yard." In fact, favored for this, and those opposed in favor of this project have outnumbered those opposed this project ten to one since the genesis of the project. This project's a win-win for Bottotack County. Millions of upfront capital have already been invested and injected into this project. Bottotack County is set to receive over sixteen million in revenue despite no upfront capital investment. Bottotack County is tasked with doing this due diligence, its homework, seeing an existing site, and debunking all the propaganda. Look, I'm the next generation owner of North Mountain. And all the propaganda that's out there about the wildlife erosion for miles around is exactly that. It's propaganda. My family is committed to conservation. We've always been committed to conservation, and we always will be. And the wildlife habitat that you see up there existing is good, but in the future, it will not only improve, but it will thrive even after tower installation. I'm asking you to approve this project, the first wind farm in the state of Virginia with a revenue arm for this county in millions. I trust that all five of you want to make the best decision for Bottotack County. And voting in favor of this project both now and in February is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next speaker is Matt Cooper.
Chairman, members of the board, members of the board, my name is Matt Cooper. I live at four zero two Timber Ridge, Fink House, Virginia. Apex Energy, my family and others are requesting that you consider the application in front of you dealing with the amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance. That amendment includes mainly raising the height of the turbines and an extension of the process of validation. Current members of this board of supervisors, along with previous members of this board of supervisors, saw and supported the positives of this project. Those positives cooker by over time Bottotack County with several million dollars of tax revenue with zero capital investment. Wow, what a return on investment. Speaking of investments, I come from a family of hardworking individuals who have invested in and will continue to invest in this county with blood, sweat, and tears. My son and I, Chase, along with our coworkers, are performing work on the new Colonial Elementary School in the county. We take great pride in knowing that the product we are providing will serve the students and residents of this great county. Our personal names are tied to that project. Our names are also personally tied to this wind project. We're very proud of that as well. My family has been on the forefront of conservation in this county since the nineteen seventies. Conservation is always present on our minds, and this project is very conservation-minded. From water quality to erosion control, required regulations will be met. Please vote to consider the proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding our Louisiana project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next speaker Jonathan Miles.
May I defer until four o'clock?
Or?
I'd like to defer until four o'clock.
Your color. Molly Petty.
I'd like to defer until four.
Four?
Yes. Or around four.
Buddy McLaughlin? Buddy McLaughlin, there you are, okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Buddy McLaughlin. I'm from Roanoke, Virginia. I had the pleasure of looking over the project that you guys are dealing with, looking at both sides. I think that Apex has become a partner that, you're looking for a partner in business, and I'm familiar with that over thirty-some years of leading companies, you look for someone that's in their DNA. And you've got a partner with Apex that is in their DNA. And I've known the Fraleys and the Coopers for over thirty years. I know the conservation. I know that being a good partner to the community, to those that they would deal with, and the way that they would deal with Apex would promote not only environmentally safe and sound practices, but there's no bigger advocates for wildlife, conservation, for reforestation, for everything that goes along with industry than the Fraleys. So I encourage you, along with the impact this is going to have on Bottotack County, to continue the process, to allow this to occur. It's going to be wonderful. Change is inevitable. Change is many times not pleasant, but change is inevitable and the hardest thing to handle. And there are those that I've heard here today that I truly sympathize with. I know the struggle to see the merits, but when you weigh everything, clean energy, being an advocate for that, for standing up in Virginia, in southwest Virginia especially, in an area that we have had to follow instead of lead, and now we're leading here in this area with clean energy, it makes me very proud to have lived in southwest Virginia all my life. And I give you all, take my hats off to each of you, for embracing this, allowing it to come forward, allowing it to be visualized, and for sharing that vision with everyone else. And as an American, thank you because our grid is suffering, there are old outdated plants being shut down every day, and to give the power in additional twenty thousand homes, and to do it in an environmentally safe way, to do it effectively and efficiently, is wonderful. Thank you all. And I'll yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Next speaker is Jesse Scott.
May I defer until four o'clock?
Four o'clock, all right, sir. Larry Do, D E Do, Larry Do.
Gentlemen, my name is Larry Do. I live at two three eight Lick Run Road, Pivac. It disturbs me to have a differing opinion than the Huntley family and Mr. Scarborough or some of my other neighbors, Mr. Conlon, I believe it was. But I have to throw my vote towards completing this project. Matter of fact, I thought we were done with this two years ago, when everything's, we got to commit and went forward with it. But I have two areas of concern that I will address that kind of sways me towards favoring the project. One of them is finances, and the other is landowners' rights. The finances concern me because we live in the northern part of Virginia, in Bottotack County, and guess where in what you call a flyover area. And from thirty thousand feet, all you see is trees. You don't even see dust. I keep thinking that I'm going to wake up one day and I'm going to read a thin fossil herald for the board of supervisors who's giving us back to the Indians. That's everything north of the house. But we're a pretty poor tribe. I understand on our own merits, and my fear is that my taxes may get increased to support the rest of Bottotack County. With the wind energy project in our door and in our hand, I think we will be a real contributor to Bottotack County. It's my understanding that the first year's revenue will exceed a million dollars to Bottotack County. And that's without any infrastructure contribution, and it's without any tax breaks, which are usually two things that come into consideration when you're trying to attract new business to the area. So this is almost like winning the lottery over the finances. The other thing is the citizens' rights. I have known Mr. Fraley for a medium number of years, and I worked for his biggest neighbor. I am retired from the U.S. Forest Service as a forester and wildland firefighter. I'm a father and a farmer, and I can see the project from my house. I don't think that it's going to be something that enhances my view, but at least I'll see that we're contributing to Bottotack's economy. Mr. Fraley deserves some kind of environmental award because I was familiar with the property that he bought before he ever bought it. It was made up of the Diaz Cook Mining Company and the Westaco Paper Mill property. It had been used, abused, rode hard, and put up with. When he bought it, he spent many, many, many thousands of dollars reconstructing roads, getting the erosion out of the creeks, building wildlife clearings, and he's done a good job of that. So I think that it hurts me to go against my neighbors, and I think I'm in favor of the project, and I think in the long term will be glad to get it.
Thank you, Mr. Do. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Jesse Dudley. Jesse Dudley? I'm in the O K.
Jesse Dudley, five forty-three Springwood Road in Thin Castle, New Jersey. I wanted to address the issue of the lifespan of these windmills, the large ones. It's not seventy years like a dam. It's not fifty. It's not forty or thirty. It may not even be twenty. I may be alive when these have to be deconstructed. I would like to know if there is a fund adjusted for the deconstruction of these towers when they have to come down, and if it is going to be adjusted every year for the cost of living and expenses taking the dam in the future. These are not permanent structures. I heard this from Dr. Sforza recently at a meeting, and he is from Virginia Tech. I would like to know that Bottotack County is not going to be responsible for deconstructing these. The expenses are enormous. And the board of supervisors makes a decision for this, I would like them to consider what it will cost in twenty years or less, what it will take to deconstruct these machines. I won't address any of the wildlife or ecological issues, but I think this is something Bottotack County citizens should know. I may not be alive at the time, since I'm seventy-two, to pay for this, but many of you will be. Thank you.
Okay, this is not meant to be a question and answer session. It's a public hearing, but I am going to, if it's okay, answer that. I believe there are provisions in the contract for the company to decommission these windmills when the time is up, if they pay the expenses. Am I right, Mr. Ruff? So it's covered.
If they are still a viable business. This has happened in the past, but if the company goes bankrupt, you cannot do it.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Steve Niese.
I'd like to speak at four, please.
Four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that lets care of all the comments that we had this morning. Yeah, I'm sorry. Hugh Wells, Hugh Wells.
Thank you. My name is Hugh Wells. I represent Sugarloaf Mountain LLC. They own the property that all the parts for the wind farm would have to come through to reach the wind farm. And they have some concerns, both because of what it will do to the value of their property, but they also have a concern about the process, because they had no notice of this at all until it was approved, and yet it will be going through their property. So you've got on record my name and my affiliation. I'll be glad to give someone a card. If you'd like to contact, contact us further, but it's going to have a significant effect on that piece of property. And so we do have a concern.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wells. It's all the requests I have to speak. Is there anyone else that put a card in that hasn't spoken? Okay, I want to thank you for being a good audience. There were no fuss invite. We got along good, and I appreciate the comments from each one of the pro or con. And at this point, we will go into a regular business meeting at this time. So I have number three is approval of our minutes for the regular meeting, the eleventh November the twenty-sixth. Motion by Dr. Scott Moore, I hear second, approve the minutes. Second to Dr. Bailey, approve the minutes. Last meeting, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, okay, most carried. I have number four, approval of transfers and additional appropriations. Mr. Zarell.
Chairman, members of the board, and all tenants are from December. There are two transfer requests, which are both current formal transfers, respect to appropriations for six dancer items and two regular appropriations. Appropriations one through six are for expenditure reimbursements and miscellaneous receipts. Appropriation number seven is for the Gale Boat Ramp project. And then eight is to cover FY twenty unemployment claims paid state. Specifically requested that these transfers and appropriations be approved on the board.
Are there any questions from any members of the board on these additional transfers and appropriations? Have a motion to approve, I hear second. Motion and second to approve, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, thank you, Mr. Zarell. I believe you've got the next one also.
Thanks, Chairman. Thomas Bennett, it's been a request for approval for December for the general fund, including debt service and all other funds, combined seven sixty-seven, eight twenty-seven oh three. Payable expenses of note are as follows. Under the short AP cycle assessor, thirty-six two hundred paid in wants for hands for continuing prayers of work in borrowing accounts for real estate real estate assessment process. On the CIP, John Distak courthouse, forty-nine nine fifty-nine, paid to cart machinery for generative replacement. Under regulatory eighth, regional organizations, authority- Under regular AP, regional organizations, thirty-four five seventeen, paid to Roman Regional Partnership for annual funding. This is payment two of two. And also thirty-seven five forty-nine, paid to visit Virginia's Blue Ridge for annual funding. This is payment three of four. Are there any questions or comments related to the accounts payable? Fennett is being requested for the month of December.
Any questions or comments from the members of the board?
One question, how much does Womper Eats have left to do? Are we, are they about finished, do you think?
I'll get back to you tomorrow with where they are compared to where they're at the question.
Any other questions or comments, members of the board? Okay, well, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion and a second to approve the accounts payable ratification with short accounts payable list presented with Mr. Zerl. Question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. The agenda item number six, we have a request for the creation of a fire EMS capital reserve. I have Mr. Zerl and Chief Ferguson.
Thank you, Chairman. In a period of discussions on the topic, county staff is requesting the board's consideration for establishing a reserve fund for fire EMS. The reserve fund will provide dedicated funding for apparatus and other capital items, such as fire EMS facilities or providing funding for debt service on capital items. Primary funding source will be revenues generated by the fire EMS cost recovery programs, which totaled one million four hundred fifteen thousand dollars for FY nineteen as compared to a budget of one million two hundred thousand dollars. Other initial funding of the reserve fund would come from reclaiming a month spent FY nineteen operational funds previously budgeted for county fire and rescue agencies. Total amount recommended for initial funding of fire EMS reserve fund is two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, two hundred sixty-two thousand one dollar and forty-one cents. As we move forward to FY twenty and FY twenty-one, it is recommended the base figure to compare to actual cost recovery program revenues will remain at one point two million dollars. Though with any annual surplus eligible for a transfer to the reserve fund, in FY twenty-two, the budget subcommittee will review and either leave the base amount at one point two million dollars or revise it. The board will be the determining government body that would authorize transfers, appropriations, and spending from the reserve fund. The proposed spursment criteria is reflected in item seven of the resolutions you have. Forty. May I ask Chief Ferguson to add to any of these comments?
I think really the only comments I'd add is we've been working with the commission and fire EMS leadership for several years now in terms of finding whether there are better ways to fund some of the large transactions that must occur, maintain apparatus to upkeep fire EMS facilities and potentially build new ones. And this is one of the steps that we feel that will help carries into the future with a means of sustainable funding from revenues that are already recovering. Any questions, Chairman, if you have any questions?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Could you go over how the decision three, or how they funded the decisions?
Yes, sir.
Can you go through that for us?
Absolutely. So, we actually just completed the first step in that phase, completing the FY twenty-one budget process Monday night by having the fire EMS commission, which is comprised of each one of the volunteer stations chiefs, meeting with myself, discussing what the priorities are based off of needs, not based off of any kind of rotation. From there, whatever the recommendation comes forward from that large group that I chair comes to the executive committee of the actual fire EMS commission, which is comprised of two board members, Mr. Horton and Mr. Sloan, as well as Mr. Aru, myself, and two volunteer chiefs designated by their peers, which right now is Chief Bettner from Troutville and Chief Johns from Eagle Rock. We discuss what has been brought forward from the whole body, to that group, and make a determination on what the request is going to be to go forward to the next budget year, which would then be put into the budget packet as a CIP request that would come before you all before any appropriations would be made. Obviously, if we had a catastrophic failure during the course of a year and we needed to come before you, that would be something that I would present that would be brought before the commission and the executive board, whatever hits this meeting. So, there's a multi-tier process, this would not be something that would be a one-off for anybody standing before you and just request a random piece of fire apparatus or a new facility. This, I think, is really putting forward some of the efforts of being a combined coordinated fire EMS system. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or concerns from the board?
Yes, sir.
I have a question about the base fund, the Y one-two. Two questions, what's the basis behind that, Howard? The other question is why are you doing only three every three years?
Sure, so, speaking to the first part of your question in terms of the why the one-point-two, we looked at a historical basis of seven years, and obviously, this past year, one-point-four was the actuals. Looking at the trends, one-point-two appears to be, first off, a safe and conservative number to start with. That does not directly impact the revenues that are already budgeted for for FY twenty going forward. That said, during last, I guess, FY nineteen budget period, we actually did the transaction with the Buchanan squad truck using overages or identified overages from the FY eighteen budget year where the same thing happened, we brought in more than we were expecting. Noting that FY nineteen had one-point-four million plus, I feel that that's a plateau. The busyness of the system and the amount of recovery with the efforts that we've put in place, better billing practices, having the third-party firmer collections process for non-county residents, all those things have kind of came together during FY nineteen. So I don't want to overshoot the runway, but at the same time, we'd like to ensure there's sustainable funding there for, you know, a brand-new fire engine, one-time transaction, maybe upwards of six hundred-plus thousand dollars. So, speaking to part one, that would be the why one-point-two. And then as far as the why not do it annually, just the proposal from the group was in terms of our change, setting the base and then reviewing it, and realistically, it could be reviewed annually and if the board so felt so just that they could.
It'd be easy enough to do that.
Right, absolutely.
So you're looking at one-point-two, more or less becomes a flaw?
It does, it becomes the foundation that stays within the general fund revenue stream. But anything above that, we would always come before to authorize placing whatever above one-point-two is available into the reserve fund. Yes, sir?
Any other comments? Chief, I'd like to just mention on what we've done this year. I think you made your one-year anniversary of being motion chief, and you've hit the road running and you haven't slowed down since, so we appreciate you. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Chairman, I'd like to make a question. Also like to make a statement.
Yes, sir.
Chief, in my years being on fire and rescue, it has come to a point of being working. I think that what you've done, hopefully would, from Jeff to Vernon, back is getting ready to, is able from one of the older guys that's hung around for a while, I appreciate it. And I hope that we'll be working together much longer and make this jewel. But I would like to, the board, to take motion to adopt the fire EMS capital reserve fund resolution that's attached and approve a transfer of two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, one and forty-one cents of general fund undesigned fund amounts, the fire EMS capital reserve fund designated fund routine.
I'll second that. Any question on the motion? Comment, if not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, no motion is carried. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The next... Yes, sir.
For the record, Mr. Zell, Mr. Zerl, I would like to note your impeccable taste in time.
Okay, the next item is, it shouldn't have been a two-thirty item, it's Highway Department, Mr. Barney, would you like to come up front, please, and share with us what you have?
Mr. Chairman, pleasure be all mine, sir. I must admit that the last two times that I've come, that I've been excited because I thought everyone was coming for my board report. Unfortunately, I found out both times that's not the case. Regardless of whether that's true or not, it's a beautiful day in Blotkott County.
Absolutely.
And just to clarify, as far as ties go, I explained to Mr. Sloan that my green shirt, red tie, and blue coat is in fact a reference to Christmas, so I hope you'll, maybe I'll invest in a pair of ties. Thank you, sir, Merry Christmas to you as well. The construction projects going on in Canada, there's a couple of them, everyone's aware of two points. Not everyone's aware of where we are, and we're certainly working on some interesting items there, not to mention gas line installation, so. That project is going along, it's designed, building, they're sort of designing it as they go along, actually. They keep submitting things for us to review, so that project is very interesting, to say the least, and it requires a lot of time. The bridge on Ball Park Road, we're getting ready to move into the phase early next year. We're going to have to close that road for some time to do some of that work. And currently, we're working with Mr. Ferguson and Chief John to coordinate the EMS efforts across that bridge. They're going to supply radio and we're going to have some communication available to us so that if they need access, we can allow access across the bridge. There'll be a tractor on the bridge, it takes a while to get that thing pulled back, but we can work with that. That's what, hopefully, we'll get a meeting set up here in the first week of January and work through some of those kinks if there are any. We're beginning now to look at the paving schedules for next year, both the secondaries and the primaries. The secondaries, we do all within the reps, you make that selection. The primaries, we work with the district, the district has a scale they use to break the road. Typically, the road improvements or paving improvements are made based on what those ratings are. So we'll be working with that, and if once that, we get that list, as I typically do, I'll send it to you so you'll know what the routes are in your area. The land development projects, interestingly enough, Ashley Links Drive and Fairway Court, I signed the documents today, so that thing becomes, it's already in the system by resolution, but for us to put it into our system in the, we call it RIM, that's a processor, database that we use to track off our roads. So that's the final step of those two. Ashley, Orchards of Ashley is the other little, evidently, we're still having a little bit of issue trying to deal with AEP and that right-of-way that the road goes under. That typically what happens is the utility company will vacate their right in the road, so it has clear titles, so the board has clear title to the right-of-way. Then we issue them a permit, but that being a high-voltage line, they're not quite as tickled about that, so we're kind of working some new issues. The action regarding the county, it'll matter to the national level, they're pushing forward. We're currently working with staff to get through that, so as far as, no, no, it's not real. It may come to that, but typically, other than the railroad, these high-power lines are relatively sensitive thing to them, and I can understand that. The better thing would have been not to put the road there to start with. Just saying, that was, that's apparent then. On the other projects, I just want to update you a little bit on the fieldstone. We met with staff and have got a commentary to go back to the developer. We're going to meet the developer and go over that project, it's a very interesting project. The other thing that has started since the last time I was here was the Redfield Waterline Extension. So that's, we're redoing those comments, and that's a project that you would not have seen on the last board report. On the projects that the residents is doing, the Old Thin Castle Road Shoulder Widening, that project is complete, done, we're finished there, that's a good thing. The Zimmerman Road Project, we have, as always, a couple of issues that have come up during construction. Some of the rocks that we've got there, it's a little bit harder to deal with than it thought, we've had some weather delays. The other thing we've run into recently is that we're now having some subgrade issues. One of those tanning trucks in there that could do the excavations caused some, what we call pumping in the road. So we're going to have to deal with that issue as well. But that project is complete and barring weather, we're going to be done hopefully this month. White Church Road, I'm going to take that off the board report, but it's done, it's set for a few of the shoulders, of course, sir?
I drove up Zimmerman the day before yesterday. Y'all have really done a lot of work on that. South as well as the residents, I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir, and we're glad to do it, it will be a help from us from a maintenance standpoint, and it's a project we're very glad to have had the opportunity to do, that's for sure. And again, we hope that things will be done this month. One of the interesting things I mentioned to someone when they were asking about, they said, don't you normally do drainage, construction from the bottom up? So, if you go out there and look at the project, what's happening is we're installing this erosion control mat that looks like a bunch of stones that have been wired together from the top down. The reason is those things are extremely heavy, and you have to roll them, and it's much easier rolling them down that steep a grade than it is by rolling up a grade. So, we agree that what we do is get down to close to the bottom where we are now, make sure the two ends are aligned, so we're working that out, just in case anybody wanted to ask. Arthway is another one that we thought were almost complete, what we found was when we went to do the final protection of the embankment on the outlet end, was that we had an issue with where the right-of-way, actually, not the right-of-way, it's that drainage of water. So, in order for us to do that construction like we would prefer it to, to protect the property, we're working the property for a while to do it. Hopefully, we'll get that before the end of the year and then we'll be able to just completely finish that project. You go out there now and you see part of the bank's exposed, and that's a part that we need to finish. Next road down next to the railroad, we have a bank that needs a little bit of stabilization, so we're going to be out there working, we'll call them that. Lane closes out there for a couple of three days. That's another one of those things that we really need to get some better weather than what we have. We can certainly do it when it's cold, but it would make it easier if we could get it warmed up a little bit. Finally, Murray Drive, we've gotten windmills to mill for that, which is good, so we're reviewing that, moving that project forward. And there's another exciting project that we're part of. And our goal is to get to work on that thing this summer, get it completed, ready for when the school closes later next year. The four-sixty arterial preservation plans, they're sort of in limbo, I'm not exactly sure how that process works internally. We've been doing the, and part of it is it's being done by consultant, and it's not managed by the residents, so how that all works with them, I'm not sure. But what I do know is that they just about completed the two-twenty portion of their study, which actually went from the south of Longo down to Marter in that area. So, it's going to follow that same format, and so once we get to the point where they're sharing with us what they think an adequate improvement in those intersections are that you see listed there, then that process will speed up. And there's some interesting designs out there, that's for sure. Are there any inwards works, you'll find it on the back, we, I just give that to you so you'll know what's going on and source it. Maybe you have someone in your district that would be interested in what the project work is. If you have any questions about that problem, please let me know. And then last but not least, that is, if there are things out there that you have, that you need me to look at and work on, let me know. I'll write you down, we'll go back and work, see where we are.
Is there any, I guess, synergy between y'all and railroad on overhappening, overpasses, and say like a mountain, fast road? And, and, do y'all have any say-so about what happens there, or is it all?
Let me just make sure I understand what you're talking about. Let me, let me just make sure I understand what you're talking about, the railroad.
Yes, the well going.
Yes, where you cross the railroad.
With your road going over the tracks.
I would say this, that it's, it's difficult to develop synergy with the railroad. Difficult. However, we, however, we do have an department within our department that works with the railroad.
A department?
Sectional department that, that works with the railroad. So if there's something, if there's something that needs to be done that, that we can identify and work through, certainly be glad to take that into consideration and see what we can do.
Delegate Austin Thompson offered to help us if we have problems.
Well, a lot of it stems from, you know, accidents on the interstate and closed back to, you know, one of those. It's a backup, stemming from truck tricklers getting stuck all over the railroad.
Some of this and some of the last. Yes, sir.
Maybe he draws the ticket, he's our P. Any members of the board have any questions or comments?
I've got two things, uh, just would like for it to be noted that we've been in discussions about the crisis bluff road. And we'll continue that conversation about gravel section there. And then the other thing that I would just like to make note of, referring back to, to Mr. Sloan's comment about the, the Rex on eighty-one and all of the flow congestion that occurred down in the Buckhannon area. This is a real problem, and we need to look at that seriously. I know that there's conversations being had, but we, we can't emphasize enough the importance of trying to eliminate that problem.
Yes, sir, and I would say this, we feel your pain. We, we get asked about those kinds of things from the commissioner's group down, and we're doing everything that we can to improve that situation. We've got a project coming up this year, we've got some recommendations for some sign improvements. We hope that the project that happens this coming year with the friction, increasing the friction on the surface will certainly help. But there are other things that we're looking at, signage and, and even the potential for a, a restriction for a speed, the rolling speed in that area. We've met with the group to try to figure out what, is there a good way for us to detour? Probably when something happens on the interstate, there's really only one place for that to go in Bogtuck County, that's.
But you know, Mr. Barney, I hear you, but we've got, you know, fire DMS situations down there that when it gets like that, we could get in a real problem.
Oh, yes, sir, I, I couldn't agree more. I just, I wish I had the answer for it. Unfortunately, I just do not have the answer.
Mr. Barney, if you can interrupt, but I think our delegate had some issues with that situation too, and how far are we with that, and if I can have a delegate respond to that situation, you can.
I think we recently held a meeting that was a post accident, being in Salem, the operations center there. And we discussed, we had the state police, Bogtuck County Sheriff's Department, Bogtuck County Emergency Services, DEQ, V, uh, VDM was there, and we really did a thorough detailed analysis of that situation. And as much as I regret to say, you know, Buckhannon acts as a fault. And, and every, every road leading to Interstate eighty-one northbound primarily goes through a single lane road from exit one sixty-two to exit one sixty-eight. So we have a lot of backups, as Dr. Bailey said, and they can be life threatening situations. Uh, we most recently had backups from exit one sixty-eight to Mill Creek Church. And we had traffic everywhere ways and, and social media means, uh, which people use today to navigate, sent cars and trucks everywhere. And it's, it's a really serious situation, and, and we've got paid us attention. Uh, we're all looking at it. Uh, as Mr. Barney said, there's a high friction pavement project north that will help, but it's not a fix. And, and we don't, at this point in time, I can't tell you we have a solution or a conclusion to that situation. Uh, I was just on the phone with Ken King today, and he's working with Jason Ferguson and New Look Sheriff to, to look at roads that we're gonna block off and the contents, the potential of an accident to prevent these situations from occurring. Uh, new signage to direct people, alternative routes to I eighty-one, things of that nature. But it's gonna take a project, and, and I regret to say, I chaired the I eighty-one committee. You know, last year, we appropriated a hundred fifty million dollars, reoccurring revenues every year for improvements to I eighty-one. But that's over the three hundred twenty-five mile corridor of I eighty-one. That's in three transportation districts, Bristol-Salem, Stanley District. So, you know, we're gonna be able to make improvements to I eighty-one, but repair it now. And I regret to say that this project north of Buckhannon was not one of the first sixty-three projects. Uh, VDOT did things out there that go into volume of accidents significantly. And we thought we would have a, a solution to that problem temporarily. The project is a hundred and twenty million rights, it's a realigned the road, and that's significant money. But we, Ken and I, Ken King and I have been discussing alternative solutions, and there, there are some solutions that would cost thirty to fifty million dollars. I asked the county to put a smart scale, smart scale project request in this year to see if, to keep our, when, when we appropriated the funds for I eighty-one improvements, we implied that we would not use the smart scales monies on I eighty-one on the fourth. But it does not prohibit the use of smart scales monies. So I think we should look at that request and keep the pressure on them. And if we can do this potential fix, uh, it's not a three lane, up the grade, full, full fledged fix, but it would be somewhat of a realignment that would eliminate some of those accidents. So, you know, all hands on deck, we're working on it. But I owe Paeco, Dr. Bailey's concerns, they're very, very legitimate and very concerning to me. Uh, you know, I was part of this board supervisor when we integrated feet for service rescue. We have one crew stationed in Buckhannon. When they're dispatched, our backups come from Eagle Rock or Trapville, but they have to be able to get there. And then the current situation and circumstances, they can't get there. So, you know, someone's going to die, is what I've told VDOT, Secretary of Transportation, Commissioner. They all have heard me loud and clear in Richmond, this is a problem, it's a transportation related problem, and it needs attention. So, you know, I, I will, I will promise you that I will continue to keep the pressure on. And I think as well, the commissioner, we're forcing to have Chief Engineer Bart Asher from Bogtuck County that understands that area of the interstate very well. But that's not the only area of the interstate that has these concerns. You know, over that three hundred twenty-five mile corridor, there are others. So, you know, we, we wanna make this squeak a wheel to get some trees, I can promise you that.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's why I need to work then.
All right, any other, did you have a moment?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Um, I, I did have one, and I did have a patient in your district who wanted me to bring this up. The Lingington Road, there's a, I think a dip right after Food Line, somewhere after Food Line and the Ford School there, right at the, there's a void, and then right in that area, apparently, there's a dip, a concern. You see that, huh? I just wanna make sure I bring that up, citizen, if I never said that was ever seen as a problem, that a road.
Sure, Pete, I'd be glad to call back if you've got any contact information for him, get a better location.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that'd be great. Anything else, Tim? You, and it wouldn't be a board supervisor's meeting if we didn't talk about Azalea Road. Hey, you've been your brother, I'm blessed to go.
Actually, it's a next agenda item too, but even apart from that, maybe it's a segue to the next agenda item. We've talked about traffic calming, and there is, I didn't see it on the list, but there is a traffic calming project underway there now, which is a replacement of culverts. And I'm not being a little bit facetious, but that, the, the point of that is that culprit repair will interfere, I guess, with our, with our plans to try a couple of months. And then they have some of that, right?
No, sir, it would not. It would not, that culprit replacement, if we choose to replace it, well, the other thing that we'd like to evaluate, the other thing we're gonna try to do is, we've got one of those pipes that's about half full, that's, that we're working on getting it cleaned out. That, we think, we, we hope that we could line those pipes. If we could put a liner on the inside of them, we wouldn't have to remove them and, and off the bottom of the pipe. If that's available to us, that's the way we'd like to go, and that wouldn't affect the traffic. If we do have to replace them, then that, that's obviously gonna be a, a deterrent for traffic going through there for a while, but, but only temporarily. But that would have nothing to do with the, the traffic calming. That's a different problem, maybe under a different hat.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that it would have the effects of calming traffic during the construction.
Oh, and certainly would, yes, sir, certainly. Yes, sir, exactly like that.
Is there a reason that it wasn't on the list, that, on, on your list?
Yes, sir, because it's not scheduled yet.
Sir?
It's not scheduled yet.
Okay.
Once we determine the plan of action that we'll take, it's a much different thing than you can say we're gonna line those pipes and just say we're gonna take them out and replace them. It's a much bigger project too, and, and so, once we know what we're gonna do and have better information for you, you know, go on the list and you guys will have all the information that, that you need to evaluate that project and know what's going on, so the citizens will know. But it's just, we're just not at that point yet.
Any other questions from Mr. Barney, concerns? Mr. Barney, thank you. I guess you're a crew, aren't you?
I am, sir, other than to wish the board and, and staff and, and citizens of Bogtuck County a very merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir, you as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Including your crow.
My crow has got Santa's hat and a little veil on it. So he's sitting fat, done, and happy.
Okay, our next agenda item is request for no through truck restriction on Azalea Road. Now, Mr. Sexton, ready that for us?
Good afternoon, members of the board, thank you so much. And Mr. Clinton alluded to this item in his previous comments. After a consultation between board supervisors, members, county administration, VDOT, including Mr. Barney and Assistant Resident Engineer Ashley Smith, and with citizens over the years on Azalea Road in Bitterville. The county would like to request that VDOT begin work to implement a study to possibly do a no through truck restriction on Azalea Road between Catawba and two twenty. It's located in residential subdivision, and the citizens have reported that large trucks are using the roadway as an alternate route between those two roads in order to cut off the corner there on the top road at the intersection of two twenty. So the request today would be the very first step in this process. As you know, from previous through truck restrictions, there's a number of traffic studies and traffic analyses that the VDOT traffic engineers would have to do. And then ultimately, it would come back to you all to have a public hearing before that goes into effect.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I can provide some background on that. I think the board of members, this has been going on, not necessarily through trucks, that's a new framework, but issues on Azalea Road, fifteen years old. Um, Geller Ross has been all in it, it's not so important traction. This issue is somewhat apart from the, from the generic cut through traffic business. Sure enough, big rigs going through, and you wouldn't think it would be the case. Uh, I think you said, you said something sort of like alleging that there are through trucks. There are through trucks. I guess it's human accident, but seen photographic evidence of tractor trailers cutting through Azalea from the top road to two twenty. So it, it's a real issue, and it's a relative new issue, but it's escalating, more and more it's happening. So this simple matter we've been discussing with VDOT, and VDOT seems to be amenable to this idea. It's just, it's part of the protocol we have to prove it's, several signs on, on the top of the road saying no through truck traffic. I guess.
It would be, and, and like I said, the, the action today would just be the request to get that process started, and then VDOT would report back at a later date, based on the findings from their traffic engineering section.
Spoke the truck around, compared to that, some of Mount Pass Road and another road in Blue Ridge. Last two days, I said, traffic comes coming through, it's got no through, no truck through traffic down there. They just ignore it, I guess, like I said, probably G I S wasn't in there. But anyway, any other questions or?
We need to work on that?
Yeah, we need the recommendation.
Chairman, I'll move that we request VDOT to begin work to implement a study on the potential no through truck destruction along Azalea Road, State Route one and two one.
Do I have a motion and a second question? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all votes, motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have one more item I'm going to cover before we take a break, and that's with Mrs. Sue Palmer and, let's see, who else was it, Sue and Greg Myers, okay. Uh, wants to come and make presentations for more about potential use of Colonial Elementary School when it's vacated. And Ms. Palmer, I guess if I, if we as supervisors could say that we have a favorite constituent, I think it would be mine. Very nice lady, very professional, and very quickly hardworking. So with that, I'll give you the podium, just give us your name.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, my name's Greg Myers. So I've been a realtor and businessman in the Bogtuck County and the Blue Ridge area for thirty, over thirty years now. The new Colonial Elementary will be finished soon, and Ms. Palmer and quite a few of the alumni have started a grassroots movement, trying to look at different alternatives to do with the building and to ask your help and to ask you to look at it. Bogtuck County, it seems to be focused more on the Daleville side right now, but it's just the way things are, seem to be happening. I have quite a few clients, quite a few areas people are looking. When I look at them with Blue Ridge, they always say, well, it seems like Bogtuck County ends or, uh, everything ends at Walmart on four six, six oh four. It, there, there's opportunities there. The, um, the older colonial has been there for quite a while. Uh, three generations of my family have gone there. Fourth generation will go to the new Colonial Elementary. So, uh, we, the undersigned alumni of Colonial School and interested citizens of Blue Ridge District of Bogtuck County and surrounding areas, collectively and respectfully request that all efforts be made to maintain and utilize the building grounds, including the playground area of the current Colonial Elementary School, property on Webster Road, Blue Ridge, Virginia, following the completed construction of the new Colonial Elementary School building. This facility provides a great deal of square footage, including the gymnasium and classrooms for possible use for parks and recreational programs. The west wing of the facility could be used for county office space and provide call savings in lieu of currently leased space buildings. The east wing provides separate space for economic development, providing revenue generation. The kitchen and cafeteria room could be available for fundraisers, private dinners and parties. Cooperative extension programs could also be used to kitchen facility. The community meeting center and the original auditorium would be a great asset to the citizens. A non user fee may or could be feasible in some instances. We further ask that locations and rooms off the auditorium be designated as a local history center to display historical information, collectibles relating to the general community area. We realize there is a cost to maintain and utilize this facility. The attached list presents a number of suggested revenue generating ideas. The need is urgent concerning the lack of any similar facility in the area. Good planning and wise usage of this resource by the county will improve services and enhance the quality of life for the growing population of all ages in Blue Ridge. Parks and Recreation Program could use the classrooms for programs, provide needed services. Uh, a lot of programs are through the Blue Ridge Library, which doesn't have a large meeting area. Um, you can have revenue generation off of that. The gym and the gym equipment alone could, sports programs, parks and wrecks, travel ball, all of that could be utilized. Large community meetings could also utilize the gym. Uh, you've got revenue generation off of that. The playground improvement, to this day, thirty years ago, you find families that take their kids and utilize the playground, the ball fields all around the school, it is used. The community meeting rooms displays of community history in the old gym, provides space not currently available for community residents. Uh, you could use rooms off of classrooms for educational facilities. A non-registered museum or collectibles for surrounding communities to burn the history of the community, which Blue Ridge area does not have, could use. Bogtuck offices that are focused on the thin cast society could also use that as outlaying offices. There's an economical return off of that. Potat offices that are focused on the Big Cassus side could also use that as outlaying offices. There's an economical return off of that. Uh, there could be retail or room spaces in either wing of the school. Uh, you could supplement income and revenue generation off of that. Economic development alone, business incubators could use the old school. There is quite a need for office space or retail space. It it could be utilized. One of the reasons, the kitchen and the kitchen equipment, cafeteria room, fundraisers, um, it could go, private dinners, parties. Um, the extension agents, I think Ms. Palmer has already talked to them about a better facility with restroom facilities indoors. There's even a possibility of a sheriff's department annex. Everything on Big Cassus, you could have a better facility, shorter emergency times. Something used to be around quite a bit, it's called community canter. Uh, they went by the wayside at the turn of the century. I think everybody here probably had thought about it, that uh, Potat County used to be the top tomato canter in the all, whole state of Virginia, a hundred years ago. There's still, Bedford County, I think, is the last one that's still there. You have daycare for adults, none in the area. That is a growing need. It is rent lease revenue off of that. Uh, daycare for special needs, none in the area. That is a much needed service. There's a building sitting there that could be utilized for that. Artisans studio workspace, there's none in the area there. Community and demonstration for gardening and extension agents. Uh, they've done quite a bit around the park and around the playground area that could be utilized also. Preschool or daycare could also have the option for that. When you hit the four sixty corridor, you have a few private, but a lot of the parents end up taking their kids in the run-up. There's quite a bit of commuters that live in that area of Blue Ridge, need to work in Bedford. That's another opportunity. Senior citizens center, there is a need for that center in the Blue Ridge area. Retrieb facility for businesses which have supplemental income, rent, lease generation. Training, retraining, training center for employment. It's a location within a mile of a major highway between Roanoke and Lechburg. FFA, Head Start, Potat Historical Society displays. Uh, they need the space. Uh, I think Ms. Palmer and her group has already talked to them about such such a facility. The Red Cross in Potat County, which we could use it as an emergency shelter. There's gym space adequate, there's kitchen facilities, and there's restroom already there. The VFW and the youth after school center. All of that could provide uh with the use of the building. The health department satellite office for environmental health division could expand services and save travel time and operating costs. The Blue Ridge Springs Hotel Reservoir, preservation of only remaining visual evidence of the Blue Ridge Springs Hotel. At the turn of the nineteenth century, the Blue Ridge Springs Hotel was the go-to place in the Roanoke Valley when it was still called Big League. Uh, it would be nice to be able to put all of that under one facility. We understand that there's, you know, the needs of the Colonial Elementary being updated, but there's also a chance for revenue generating off of this and to save something for the community of the Blue Ridge area. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like to present a petition with almost nine hundred signatures that we have just started to give.
Thank you. Do you have all the potential?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know you guys have worked a long time. I guess you've been working on this about two years, I guess, haven't you? I would be glad to, and thank you.
Thank you. I'm Sue Tyler Palmer, one, two, three, first crossing drive, run up two four one two. I represent the alumni of Colonial. Our class of nineteen fifty-nine was the last graduating class from the school. In the packet we've given you, there is quite an extensive summary of the history of Colonial. Just to break it down in a nutshell, in the nineteen thirties, there was a need for a high school in the area and a number of citizens came together to work hard with Potat County to try to make that a reality. The county purchased the land where the school is now located. The county put up a thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars had to be the matching fund from the residents in the community. And in the day of the depression, that was a lot of money. There was a real commitment there. They applied for the federal W P, um, W P A program to construct the school. The first application was rejected, but they didn't give up. They went back and were successful in getting that application approved. And forty-five percent of federal dollars paid into the building of the school. In nineteen thirty-nine, we opened for classes for the first through the twelfth grade, and the school is building today. Citizensreporter dot org, two thousand seventeen data calculates the approximate population which would be serviced with proposed transitions for the old Colonial School. At fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five citizens, living in the Blue Ridge, Montvale, Bonzaak area. In the Blue Ridge District by age zero to nineteen, twenty-two percent, twenty to fifty-nine, fifty-two percent, sixty plus, twenty-six percent. This gives us a unique opportunity to utilize this facility to generate revenue while also providing community use and services. If you wouldn't mind looking in your handout to the nineteen eighty-seven rendering of layout of the school, you will see that there are actually three sections of the school. The east wing could be used for economic development such as office rental, light manufacturing. This section has a private entrance and exit, separate from the original school structure, and is located on the east end opposite of the gymnasium and rooms that would be used for other activities or agency use. The original school also has a separate entrance into the old auditorium, which would work perfectly for a community meeting room. And the classrooms directly off the sides could serve as a community museum. As Greg mentioned, there is high grassroots interest and willingness to donate and set up artifacts and collectibles and photographs depicting the extensive history of the area at large. It is understood that need, there needs to be an assessment of physical plant systems and financial investment for upgrades. I've spoken with Kathy Cox of the Trinity Corporation regarding a split unit that could be installed in each area which allows each room to have heating and cooling in the business and not have to heat the or cool the entire building, which would be a great conversation. She stated she would be available to meet with any officials of the county for a walkthrough and give recommendations at no charge. And her contact number is included in the packet that we provided. We met with Mr. Martin, with of our district, which we appreciate, and Mr. David Norman, the deputy county administrator, and Mr. Kim Miss Fadden, director of economic development. I've also had discussion with the project and asked for input from Rodney Strickland, our sheriff, and James Farmer, the director of Parks and Recreation, who at this time told me is assessing citizens' desires for programs as well as space needs for expansion of services. An email from Kimberly Butterfield, Virginia Cooperative Extension Services Associate Extension Agent for Family and Consumer Services Run-up County and Citizen Cities of Roanoke and Salem. States that she receives calls from Potat residents about canning and home food preservation. Much of, uh, most of the calls and even most who come to the canning classes in Roanoke are actually Potat residents. The Colonial Kitchen would be great for providing such services and expanding educational opportunities through our local unit. Susan Go, the director of Run-up County Social Services Department, whom I have not met, but she said she would be here. We said that she would at this time share some information relating to services for needs in the county. And when Ms. Go finishes, I would appreciate the opportunity to continue.
I don't know, Ms. Palmer, and I didn't really prepare any remarks. She did contact me. I think the two proposals we discussed were the idea that we don't have an adult daycare facility in Potat. Uh, that's a need that's not being met currently, and also, I think we're all pretty much aware that there's a shortage of daycare facilities. That's part of other groups I'm involved in, so I did confirm with her that that's also a need that we have. Actually, we have some discussions with some people from Head Start. There are some folks who are willing to expand in this area, but we just don't have any any facilities or any businesses here now that are willing to expand. Their programs are already full. They don't want to expand, but um, so I just told her that I certainly would support her her efforts, but I haven't come with specific information unless you have any questions. Okay?
Thank you.
We are realistic in knowing there will be costs involved. We urge you to include a line item allocation in the upcoming county budget for assessment of the building structure, its use, and research for potential revenue generation to offset costs. The ownership of the property and the space to be, will be a great savings to the county when it reverts back to county ownership from the original. The question has been asked. What if the county decides to sell or to lease the property? If such action takes place, we implore you include the transaction as stipulation that the school building will never be destroyed or demolished. And there will be a partnership with the county and community residents to utilize the gym, cafeteria and kitchen, the original gymnasium with the two side classrooms on the west end for community services. Now, there are two examples of such commitment in the county already on Route eleven. Davis Elliott Electric constructed operational facilities while preserving the old layman home place. And a little further down the road, the farmhouse was not compromised when the um, Lawrence Transfer put all of its uh, um, offices around that uh, facility. And we know that in looking at these examples, the county can have space needs and it can have a great uh, respect for historic landmarks. Please approve budget funds for the assessment and work diligently as cooperative departments to make this a reality. You have our commitment to assist in any way we can. We thank you for your consideration and thank you for your service to the county. That was best to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmer. You all did a lot of work in that. We'll turn this over to staff and we will make your next decision.
We care and we're always available to have your support.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to take about a ten minute break before we uh, get started on agenda item number ten. That would run a little bit behind the question period, took off an hour from that.
You can see from the uh, preferences, we threw twenty-five thousand dollars into the building and the board of the morning recreation commission was able to prove until it's on all of the requests. But a little bit of help in the playground maintenance operation, wildlife. One of the projects has to do with the Patton Hill uh, school, which was the old school in Potat, providing great monthly twelve education for African Americans and Dutch children in fifty. For those folks, there's three groups that have committed one to monitor that, put some markers and all some attention and maybe put some explanation out there as to what happened in their path. The canyon is now hard, but putting in some additional restrooms, if you like me, you go down there, there's lots of people out of activities that are doing very good dishes apart. Significant adjustment about the town and part of the uh, fun helping to help out. Eagle Rock was uh, putting the building on playground and uh, this was addressing our maintenance needs. A couple of years ago, I shared with you about three hundred thousand dollars for maintenance needs and playground. Uh, this is one of many others to address some of those. You can see uh, forty-eight thousand dollar project, play that in the box. And I appreciate the Eagle Rock Elementary School PTA group raising funds and we're happy to match part of that, helping with that project. Uh, this is trail information, Kios, trail uses on the horizon, then you're aware, uh, local users and new uh, visitors are anticipating some signage. And this is a, uh, going with a horse trail and it provides some directional signage, uh, to help folks know where to go and how to get around in the junction course. This project, you can see, a couple of groups, Chip and somebody helped out with that. Cheryl Walsh, who's helping push you, back country horse group is uh, leading that. Mile markers on James, that's been a topic a couple of years ago, to uh, regain some traction. Uh, we work directly with the district and the effort to play market, learn everything, uh, help locals as well as visitors. Uh, there are nine one one folks, that makes some calls, folks don't know the fact of where they're at in the river, so this is a rest number issue. How far are these uh, mile markers apart? Uh, they're projected two to three miles at this point. Kids are spending a lot on road, but that is, there's a lot of justice to work out for this project. Uh, thank you for a bad gang, small project that addresses the safety issue down there. Mountain bike trail mapping, this is uh, again, mountain biking trails, good thing. Uh, ground hole is, uh, connect community folks, don't know where they are. We have a lot of trails and our partnership with Hikes World, they're gonna take this on and uh, do some mapping, create online presence for folks to know where the trail heads are with our team, all of that, how to get along, uh, where to go and whatnot. See Hikes World, uh, spread out some money for that and some labor to get this done. Tribe Elementary, additional playground down there for kids, and again, this takes a lot of money and uh, we appreciate the PTAs and how they work for the community to provide those assets. Triangle Town Park, you all know how busy that place is, and they're giving up, update their cameras and add some, I think, in the park lot areas. Uh, we're helping with some uh, vendors and they prefer foundation, just trying to do a good job for security to the, to the folks that come to that park. Uh, this is a summary of the thirty-five thousand, that's, we have a lot improved in budget. Uh, the request came to thirty-eight through a five. And it was uh, my recommendation, uh, we take part of the seven thousand, that should a lot of the playground maintenance. Take three thousand of that with, with this, since there's been some different amount of money on playgrounds, asking to re-aid some of our maintenance needs that has sponsored this. So I just appreciate the opportunity to share with you, uh, some great projects that the community's doing. And really no actions since you've already approved it, it's a one evening, just want to share what your board appointed, commission members, and all through the process and some things that they approved. Want you to be able to confirm and see what's going on.
Yes, sir. Is there a need for increasing that amount? Cause I'd like to see this utilized even more so. Is there a larger amount we need to go to for the building? And having the community be part of this and have some ownership in it?
Yes, I think there is a need to increase that slightly, not trying to do that much of a cost issue.
Okay, yeah, please do remember, I think that we would all be in favor of that situation, but uh, I think that's.
Right, this, these projects are coming in without any approval, there's just sheer volatility. There are some needs out there that we could actually use and improve. volatility. There are some needs out there that we could actually use some approval.
We need to find those and start working fast as possible.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments to Mr. Farmer?
Chairman, if I may, this, uh, my way to, to begin this, I have the pleasurable duty of being a board rep on the, on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And, uh, I mean, this program, as we all know, it goes back probably twenty years and it's been such a success. It's been award winning in fact, and year after year, it produces well beyond, it's leverage, basically without leverage in the fall. Um, and I'm afraid if I say a question about Scott, I certainly would prove the idea of increasing that thirty-five K. Um, but it's just, I guess, two examples of success of this. One is it started off, you know, we probably remember, started off strictly at local facilities because they were such bad shape. And we pretty much, we never want to say they're all corrected, but we fixed most of that. And now according to things that are not necessarily sports, but would be equally important, like the academy deal and so on, the river mileage, markets, and some really good stuff. So I think it's great. I commend Jim for the work he's been doing. I do, I do ask question this, I meant to ask it earlier. Um, so like you said, uh, playgrounds are expensive and there's always cost of runs and everything, including playgrounds. So what happens like forty-eight K, the Eagle Rock, we will, we will contribute a certain amount. It goes over the budget. Who picks it up? I know it's not us through this program, but do you know how it's going to work?
Well, one, two playgrounds have been implemented over the last five years that I've been in this role and all of them turned into numbers.
They came out okay?
They didn't see good numbers up top.
Okay. I see. That's good. It's a good program. Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Question, if I may, I'm sorry. For the, the James River, is there an opportunity to also look at putting QR codes on there, kind of give some of the idea of what's going on in that area if they want to get off that site and take a look?
We encourage you to drop a thumb in the river.
Yeah.
You're exactly right. That has been talked about. Good, good point. Uh, there are some areas on the river that involve the, the blue stuff. So that's a concern. But at least they know where they were at some point on the river when they did cell service. And it doesn't seem to be widespread, but QR codes especially on the inlet and outflakes so that they can get the more information. But that was also talked about with the mapping of the mountain bike trails. So yes, I think that's a good question.
Okay. Anyone, uh, you know?
Yes, sir.
If you all may.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Farmer, I see your project request that, that there's thirty-five thousand dollars available and it says over here, amount recommended thirty-eight thousand through a five. So are you three thousand dollars short for that?
We were. And we have seven thousand on playground maintenance, operation, wildlife, ride recommended. We're using that to make a difference.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
All right, sir. Uh, we don't need a presentation.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Farmer. Thank you for working. Um, agenda item number eleven, we have a presentation on the FY nineteen county audit. And Mr. Corbin Stone, if you would like to hear it, sir.
Thanks for having me. I should have had in front of you a handout. It's a few pages. We have a, 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 a hundred seventy-six page long. We're going to go through the smaller portion. Uh, the auto, well, this year, uh, we didn't have any issues. Uh, we had a few adjustments that mentioned in back to the law before. Uh, and you had a few of the new transactions this year, specifically change over, doing the landfill, replacing the debris, uh, rights. Uh, and then also, uh, a recovery on interest expense, uh, which is, uh, a, 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 if you look at the handout, this, this, eight ones to the smaller two, I kind of had some store related going back to two thousand and ten. And I have a few things highlighted for you. You can see fund balance of the general fund. Um, sorry, I didn't know if that was later. So you can see fund balance two thousand nineteen fifteen and a lot of that is restricted. Uh, that proceeds, uh, yet to be spent. Uh, and you can see highlighted in yellow, uh, your unrestricted or undersigned and designed fund balance. Uh, so it's just under twenty-seven eight dollars each year at twenty-six point eight million dollars. That's a slight increase from prior years by one point three eight dollars. If you all go back to two thousand and ten, you can see you're at fourteen million dollars in assigned, in the signed fund balance. When I say assigned fund balance, that means you decide, you restrict it in some way, type of form, but you can always take all those seventy-eight million restrictions. That's the board. They're not exempt. Uh, so you can see that pretty good growth in that, in that number. And that's really what we pay attention to over the past seven years. If we look at full accrual accounting, fund base, and as you say, the stuff at the top is what we call fund, a modified accrual, a modified cash based accounting. So we're just looking at basically cash transactions and short-term receivables and short-term payments. At the bottom, when we say full accrual accounting, recovery on activities, uh, we're talking about full accrual accounting, which is we reported assets such as, you know, such as the courthouse, uh, inventory boxes, vehicles, things like that. And we're depreciating those assets over, over time. So it's two different bases of account. Uh, net position for the county increased in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen to forty-seven million to fifty-five million. And in kind of lay terms, that's what we, we expect you, we're a liquid date tomorrow, uh, we think at the end of the day, once you sold everything, you have big fifty dollars, big dollars. And I say that, you have to remember that you take assets of original cost, we even appreciate them. Some assets appreciate. So that would be kind of low end of the range. One thing you can notice is that unrestricted net position actually increased from ten million to sixteen million. That's because you decreased your pension line bill to about two million every year. We also had a decrease in your landfill line bill. You agree with county waste. Says they're going to take a reposure to the landfill. So you guys got to take that line bill off the books and stop doing it. So get further down, you can see your long-term obligations for capital are at seventeen hundred dollars. The only comparable state data we have for just the county goes back to two thousand eleven. The state averages, you can see the weighted average is pretty six hundred dollars to the unwed average of a thousand dollars. Uh, we do have a comparable, if we take all the school board line bill, we would refer to pension obligations and compare that to the state line average. We did that to the capital, vet burden, vet and all term line bill burden to three thousand, three hundred dollars compared to the state average of just over six thousand dollars. You're a little bit more than half of the state average. The next couple pages, we should try to graphing some of this information right now. So page two, you can see the long-term obligations are checked off. We picked up the two thousand last year and then a decrease this year, which eventually went down a little bit. And we had a three, three eight dollar decrease in the landfill. Undecided fund balance, you can see that's been truly covered since two thousand and ten. The next page, we just saw unrestricted net position. Again, we can see that increased significantly over the year, uh, primarily because of the deep payment. It's, 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 it's a decrease in our pension line bill, it's a decrease in the last. Page four, I'm just going to just, I'm just graphing out the major revenue sources. Page five, I'm just graphing out the major venture trends going back to two thousand and eight. And with the next two graphs, I'm just showing you page sixty-seven, kind of your reliance, uh, as far as the general fund goes, reliance on taxes versus say they compare two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and ten. And what you can see is in two thousand and nineteen, there's a greater reliance on local dollars, local generated dollars, rather than what's taken in two thousand and ten. So essentially what we're seeing in most places is flat state, straight state revenues. Uh, so that means an increase in spending you can have are primarily funded to the local residents and it's largely your property taxes, um, excelled taxes. Hey Jake, I'm just showing you your tax assessments going back to two thousand and five. And you take real estate, you take one tenth of a real estate assessment because otherwise the graph would be very, very skewed and had a lot of lines at the bottom and a lot at the top. But you back to end run in all areas, all, all areas of the assessment, real estate, personal property, uh, machinery tools, public service, corporation subjects as well. We're not, we're not seeing that a lot of places. Um, so your tax, tax base isn't growing. You're not necessarily seeing that in all of the counties. Probably by my last graph on page nine, just giving you a little animation, you know, uh, school fund. And how much you're funding relative to the state, of course, the federal government. And you can see you're not quite there, but you're, you're almost funding as much as the state is when it comes to education. Uh, so they are, these assets are twenty-eight million dollars and you're just at twenty-nine million dollars. Next couple pages, pages ten and eleven. Anytime we go to an audit, we have a few recommendations for management to see to, do a copy of the recommendations. Nothing too good, we see here in the office, I think you'd like to see the press during the next year. Um, one thing on the second page, I will tell you that now we're simply from federal name, uh, federal grants. Have, have certain procurement policies and compliance policies. So we just recommend that you start ordering on those and getting those in place. But you're in compliance with the, what we call the federal viewpoint. And you probably, you may have already some documents on, but certainly want to do that before, before the next one. Pages twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we have our runner for those sort of governments. We came into the morning and the staff, they didn't provide us with questions or something like that. And we know that it's like, you get the bullet, like, uh, you didn't have any problem with staff in fact. Uh, they're very accommodating. If we ask someone, they give you a, uh, so it's not even a marketplace like that. They're very responsive to everything we ask for. And, uh, if you question anything, you can wear it with you by hand and follow. The latter also pointed out some of the significant estimates in the management segments. And I think those are the four. If you look at those, the pictures, your pension line billies, uh, your postpartum pension line billies, they aren't as much as overall. We don't know how much you're going to have to pay out on someone's pension. Uh, so that's an estimate of the present value of that anticipated. And depending on how stock market does, um, you know, right now we are at, I think, is a parter of thirty-seven percent. Depending on how the stock market does long-term, your line bill is going to be up. And in fact, finally, the last week that you just paid seven, getting to the rest of the, the rest of the report are going to be new accounting standards that are, are coming out the next couple of years that your staff will be to implement. Uh, we had a pretty active, uh, federal accounting standards rule. So they, they put out a number of new standards that will be implemented over the next seven years. Your staff will be implementing. Uh, so the founder named seven pages report, we may, we may crack two hundred pages, which I'll send around. But I'll, I'll stop there and start answering questions.
Any members of the board have any questions? So if you'd like to ask.
The chairman has. Your chairman. Uh, looks pretty good overall. I have a question on page eight. The tax assessment by year, can you explain that that's all out of particular, like public service, but that might represent some aid to supply.
Yeah, uh, public service and the power company, uh, power company assessments, uh, the grownups, gas companies. So anytime they have a inventory, um, then those are the assessments. And I, I want to say, hey, you guys want to talk, that would leave these.
The, 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 so, uh.
The grownups, yes, as well.
Or the, yeah.
Grownups, yes.
So that answers information handed off.
Then if we, uh, the state does, uh, those assessments, uh, then you determine our, our bill.
And then assuming tools, that's not really assessed every, every, every four years. It's a lot of personal, uh, with, uh, really saying, is it, that's just, uh.
Can you make sure that the return, uh, 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 they do, there is some, um, some adjustment to the value there. Depending on the age of the equipment that they have, uh, there is some adjustment down.
So, as, as a report, that, the owners of that equipment?
Yeah, the, 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 uh, back just a point to where they actually put that file in their, in their account. And I would say, actually, though, the first property I was, I was completely, I think, we're having from other places, we sort of see a decrease in two thousand fifteen. And sometimes time flies or some increase in the property. That's a feature of the, of the, of the, of
Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Uh, I, I would just ask generally, and hopefully this is a fair question. You know, based on what you see here, how would you put Bottotac County as compared to the other counties as far as being financially responsible?
Strong. Strong. Yeah, yeah. Your, your financial position is strong.
Thank you.
You, you both thoroughly, both, you all learned.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Stone, thank you. We appreciate your time. We appreciate the audit. It's always good to be a good, strong caller. We appreciate it.
And I will point out that my contact information is on the handout. So if you guys have any questions, um, don't hesitate to make a call. It's not the audit or anything to do with time. So I'll have you cover it anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, now we're into agenda item number twelve. Before we do that, uh, I'd like to share something that I shared just, um, in the earlier meeting. And before we start with the additional citizen comments on item twelve, I would like to remind the citizens, again, this will be a civil process. As previously stated, please sign in to speak on one of the forms. I would also like to make it clear that the meeting today is only the beginning of any process with regard to agenda item number twelve. And other than today, there would be multiple towns for public comments if the board decides to take any actions at all. Also, today is not a public hearing. And if the item moves forward, there would be appropriate public hearings in the future. Also, we should make you aware that no board decisions have been made on item twelve. We take pride in the fact that the board supervisors' actions are based on a very public and legal process. We are here to learn and properly process this item as it comes before the board supervisors. And we are proud of the oath of the First Amendment, free speech, and what asks our citizens to be respectful of all speakers. The speakers are limited to three minutes and will be asked to sit down at the time of proceeding. If you plan to repeat a previous business comment, I would ask that you say so to reduce the total time of the meeting. And we will note that your comments are similar to previous comments in minutes. I hope you realize I have added this public comment period away from the norm. Normally, there would be no comments allowed. However, due to the gravity of the issue, I will allow comments on the item. And if you've already spoken on the topic today, I would ask that you not speak a second time. Now, I will ask our county attorney, Mr. Lockaby, to be there with the process of item twelve. So to be clear, then we will move into the additional public comment period. Mr. Lockaby, can you please give us the process on this item?
Yes, I wanted to clarify once again, and I want to emphasize that Mrs. Pendleton, the community director of community development is going to present on issue issue twelve. Item twelve is a presentation from Apex on returning, uh, situation that they have with regard to their project. They have a project which has been going on for several years. They have previous SEP approval from county as well as approval from DEQ. The second item is a petition from Apex. They have asked a certain tax They have asked a certain textual changes to be made to the zoning ordinance. This is a matter which is within the hands of the board supervisors. The question before the board supervisors with regard to that is not whether APEX's project should go forward, it's whether certain changes should be made which might or might not allow an SCP in the future. This is a change to the baseline law, which would be out of the board. The third item, number fourteen, is whether or not to, uh, issue an award for a contract or possibly to amend a R F E that was previously issued. On a study to assist county staff in doing the most thorough possible evaluation of an SCP, if and when that became a matter before the board supervisors. Before that became a matter before the board supervisors, the next one would need to occur. Uh, I hope that that clarifies the matters of what I, and certain questions you or other supervisors have.
Any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Lockaby at this time? Presently, okay. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Lockaby, and, uh, at this time. We have a presentation by APEX Clean Energy, Mr. Charlie Johnson, if he would come aboard. Oh, and. My apologies, we've got several people signing their comments. Okay, well, I don't wanna do that, I don't wanna, I am a relative, okay. All right, the first, uh, are you, speaker, come on. First speaker will be Steve Meese.
Good evening, gentlemen, God bless you for your patience. My name is Steve Meese, live at seven fifty Morris Creek Road, Lexington, Virginia, about two miles from this project. APEX claims that the average wind speed is thirteen, eighteen miles an hour on North Mountain. The actual term is average annual wind speed. In the last couple of weeks, we've experienced some high winds in this area. Y'all know that there are gusty winds November through March in this area. But what about the rest of the year, especially July through September, when peak energy needs are, are required in this country? If the wind's gusted thirty miles today and doesn't blow tomorrow, what happens? Then that's an average of fifteen miles per hour. So when you think about average speed, that's what I'm talking about. We have high winds now, but when we need them, when we need the power, um, in the summertime, it's not there. When the wind is blowing, the grid operators are required to accept the energy into the grid, kinda like your obnoxious brother-in-law trying to barge in for your dinner. But what happens is, what happens to the natural gas generating facilities that generate power when this happens? They don't shut down, they keep burning because of the time it takes to fire a fossil fuel generating plant on. No energy, no emissions are reduced by the use of wind energy. I have an article here for y'all to read that, if you'd like to see that. I'll skip down, let you talk about decommissioning. Now, with the decommissioning, I request you look at this document carefully that they have provided, an engineer estimate, two points. The engineer preparing the document assumes that the landfill is within thirty miles, this is your landfill, that will take the refuge. The amount of concrete that they're, that they, that is estimated to dispose is a hundred and seventeen cubic yards, not that big a deal. The port, report makes no estimate to the volume of blades refuge that needs to be handled. The blades disposal disposal seems to be a bigger problem for the disposal of mid, in the Midwestern states. Please understand this problem, and if it is expected that your, if it's expected that your landfill will take this ref- refuge. Secondly, the engineer assumes that the, to disassemble and dispose of the turbine will be a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars each. That's six million, one hundred and thirty-four. I've got articles here that say that cost actually, that's going on right now, is between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars per turbine, which blows his whole model out. He's showing right now that with the recycling, that money will come back to the project for this decommissioning. If you use the actual numbers that's going on right now, it's gonna cost money, so make sure you've got that covered in your surety line. I ask that you do your due diligence, not just listen to what APEX has to say, and research some of the problems and neg- negative aspects of these things. Call government officials in some of the hundred and twenty-six counties that have made these industrial wind turbines illegal to get their perspective. Learn from other people's mistakes. Any questions?
No, thank you, sir.
All right, I've got this, this one more question. Next speaker is Jeff Scott. Jeff Scott.
Uh, Jeff Scott from Lexington. This is just a visual aid to show you a size comparison of what was originally proposed and the newer taller turbines. You can see there's a significant difference. There's so much that I could talk about with respect to why Rocky Forest should not be built. But being limited to three minutes, I will focus on only one topic. That topic is how APEX has a record of questionable business practices. They have been sued or investigated in at least three states, Oklahoma, Illinois, and New York. I'll concentrate on New York. APEX has a project called Lighthouse Wind that as of now is on hold. In the Lockport, New York newspaper, there is a commentary entitled "APEX Specializes in Public Deception", written by a member of the Somerset Town Council. It's pretty lengthy, but here's a summary of two points. One, here's a quote, "APEX employs slick and deceptive practices." Two, a paying APEX lobbyist presented false information about a local group and local residents opposed to the Lighthouse Wind project. Three, APEX brought in outside supporters that occupy limited seats for residents. Four, an APEX representative did not show up to present inspection data to a family of orders required by the permit. Five, an APEX biologist lied about receiving a letter from the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Six, APEX CEO Mark Goodwin ignored letters from supervisors to have a meeting. Seven, APEX used questionable methods to get reluctant landowners to sign leases. In addition, in two thousand sixteen, the New York State Attorney General was asked to investigate APEX's conduct by the town of Somerset with respect to attempts to influence state and local government decisions by the use of astroturfing. Astroturfing is a practice of masking sponsors of a message or organization to make it appear as though the message originates from and is supported by neutral third parties. In other words, astroturfing creates the false impression of legitimate grassroots movement. APEX may have engaged in astroturfing by one, concealing the true author of letters in support of the project, and two, failing to disclose whether the signatures of those letters have a personal financial interest in the project. And this year, Ali Wilson, the Vice President of Public Affairs at APEX, stated in an interview that APEX has to proactively go find our supporters, motivate them to engage, and help them engage. And it's not enough to invite them to our events and get educated. It's not enough to expect the people who care will show up. It is really up to us to identify folks who may not realize that this issue relates to them and motivate them to come out and support. This information got me to thinking what APEX might be doing here in Potatot County. I know that the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, does not require the public to be informed of a meeting if there are less than three members of a governing body attending. This also means that the content of the meeting is not required to be provided via FOIA request. So I wonder if any such meetings have occurred with APEX? And if so, what would APEX promise, or did they pressure anyone? So do you want to rely on information provided to you by APEX or claims made by APEX? And do you want to entrust that APEX will abide by any of the requirements of the special exception permit with orders or permit from the state? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Scott. Next, uh, speaker is Molly Petty.
Hi, I'm Molly Petty, I'm from Rockbridge, Virginia. Um, thank you for the opportunity to.
Speak at your address, please.
Alex two oh seven Coles, C O B Lane, Rockford, Jazz, Virginia. Um, I have, uh, something that's probably over three minutes, so I'm gonna cut it down because some people have said the things that I'm about to say, um, anyway. And I would just like to say that Mark Twain, the great American writer, said it's a terrible death to be talked to death. And I know a lot of us are feeling like that right now. Um, I, uh, as a Rockford citizen, I'll have to live with Black Potatot's decision. I urge the board not to make decisions negatively impact impacts what belongs to us in both counties and indeed the region. Clean air, water, heritage forest, hunting, mountain views, healthy forested areas, and abundant wildlife. Uh, for these reasons, I urge the board to deny APEX's request. Uh, APEX developers note that since the board supervisor approved their project, wind industry technology has changed, and thus their rationale for an amended permit. But much has changed on the environmental front as well. We know more about climate change now, since, uh, twenty sixteen. We know about bird bit migration, more about forest fragmentation. Since twenty sixteen, we have available to us much more information about where wind turbines rattle kills and species extinction. That APEX gives us such short shrift to this relevant, uh, data, even in their amended, uh, permit request, suggested disappointing and troubling approach to pre-construction due diligence on their part. I understand APEX's desire to alter ordinances to their present circumstances. Doing so would weaken the county's position in the future, though, and kind of make a mockery of public comment sessions like we're having right now. Time limits ensure that all stakeholders are not kept suspended animation for an undue amount of time. And that includes property owners that are nearby these, these turbines, or the proposed tech turbines. All permit, permits and documentation is up to date, uh, we know that because of the time limit. Like the student who asked for one extension on homework after another, one more change in page length. APEX's request to change the rules signifies a troubled process, a pattern of hurried and unthoughtful decision-making. Uh, in three minutes, I, uh, well, I don't even have time for the one example I was gonna give, and that is the rotor swept height survey done by, uh, West, uh, which, uh, saw that there were six, uh, that of seven bald eagles recorded within the survey area, six flew within rotor swept areas or heights, two within the turbine area. Obviously, this particular data is, is just worthless, meaningless, uh, given the proposal to, uh, heighten, uh, the turbines. And, um, I have, uh, if I could give you my, um.
Just wrap it up real quick.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm just gonna pass it, I'm a former teacher, I'm just gonna pass out.
Is this our homework?
No, these are the comments that I was gonna read, um, maybe it was elsewhere, I was transcribed.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Jonathan Miles, you can be coming on down.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Jonathan Miles, my address is six nine zero five Harvest Farms Lane in Jose, Virginia, Allenwild County. I'm a professor of integrated science and technology and the executive director of the Center for the Advancement of Sustainable Energy, James Madison University. Uh, my comments weren't intended to include this, but I feel some of you all should come to the defense of APEX after some comments you've heard previously. I've worked with, over the course of twenty years, probably more than a dozen wind developers, uh, most of whom had some activity here in Virginia. Uh, they are by far one of the most thorough and careful developers I've had a pleasure to work with. Um, I won't get into detail, I certainly don't have time to. But there's, uh, those are the reasons why I take every opportunity I can to direct students who graduate from my program to consider APEX when they're hired. And those who have gone and worked for APEX report nothing but best. They've been very pleased and they certainly feel that they have found a home in, in a very, uh, careful and diligent company. Let me go forward, uh, you've heard about property values today, and rightly so, property owners who might be adjacent or close to a wind farm would have concerns. I would like to point your attention to a, uh, report generated by the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory ten years ago. It's a bit dated, but it's still considered one of the gold standards when we talk about this issue. Uh, it's called "The Impact of Wind Power Projects on Residential Property Values in the United States". It examines seventy-five hundred properties in nine states, and it does draw conclusions that in fact proximity to and the site of wind farms has, if anything, a negligible effect, and in some cases can't even have a positive effect. But it's inconclusive, the notion that, uh, the presence of a wind farm in proximity to within twenty-four miles of a wind farm would necessarily have a negative impact on property values. Uh, another, I want to bring your attention is this. I heard comments in the earlier session today, uh, to this effect, that APEX is asking for modifications, and more of these requests will follow. I heard also that this is perhaps a dramatic bait-and-switch approach. Let's keep in mind here that in the four to five years since this endeavor began, the technology has advanced dramatically. Higher hub heights, longer blades, larger wind turbines, that's the gold standard today. And I would go so far to say that if APEX were not coming back and making this request at their expense, and with great, a great deal of burden, then they would be remiss. Uh, it would be full-hearted at this point, and certainly in the long run inefficient not to consider the latest technologies. And obviously, they're going about it the only way and the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Jean Clontz.
Good afternoon. I'm Jean Clontz, and I have lived at two nine two one Mount Moriah Road in Rock for forty-eight years, and I'm enjoying the views of the North Mountain all the time. You may not be aware that Southwest Virginia already produces abundant renewable energy. So much so, that the Rocky Forest project hails in comparison, and the significant and devastating ecological costs far outweigh its benefits. APEX wants you to believe that their wind energy project is the first renewable energy to ring. It is not. Hydroelectric facilities have been producing on-demand renewable energy through this region for decades. The following facts are verbatim, verbatim online. The hydroelectric dam at Slater Lake has been generating renewable energy since nineteen thirty-nine. It produces seventy-five megawatts of energy continuously. Energy produced by wind, of course, is intermittent and variable. Wind power depends on winds strong enough to turn the blades, and it varies with wind speed. Rocky Forest's installed capacity is seventy-five megawatts, meaning what it could produce if the winds blow hard and at constant velocity all the time. Measured wind data from the North Mountain Meteorological Tower reveals that the winds are really not adequate to turning blades very often. A more reasonable expectation of Rocky Forest's power output from all the towers is around ten megawatts. And that is only while the wind is blowing. There are more renewable energy facilities here, even with greater output nearby. The pumped storage hydro facility in Smith Mountain Lake has been producing renewable energy since the nineteen sixties, and its operating capacity is six hundred and thirty-six megawatts. Although this is not continuous, when it produces energy for hours at a time, it is constant and regular, not variable. But the pinnacle of renewable energy in this region is the Bath County Pumped Storage Hydro Facility, which at peak power production has three thousand megawatts exceeding the generating capacity of the Hoover Dam. Since December nineteen eighty-five, it has been producing an average of two thousand seven hundred megawatts for ten to twelve hours per day, every day, during the daytime when it is needed the most. Clean renewable energy has been produced here as long as most of us have been alive. These three facilities that I mentioned produce nearly three hundred and fifty times what Rocky Forest will. In closing, I must say I am appalled to note. In closing, I must say I am appalled to note that the Sierra Club approves of this project since their founder, John Muir, who was the inspiration behind the National Park Service, was deeply concerned with preventing industrial development on our pristine national areas. Please do not review the project. Thank you very much.
Awesome. No comments, please.
Eric Clontch. Hello, my name is Eric Clontch. I live on 2817 Mount Moriah Road in Eagle Rock. Because the board is considering changes to the county wind ordinance for Apex, it is appropriate to consider other ordinance changes at this time that would better protect both the board supervisors and the county residents. I am a retired Air Force officer, scientific analyst specialty, and was a certified systems engineering professional. I have reviewed large government contracts and know contractors maximize their benefit while merely meeting government requirements. Because the county government has no wind energy experts, Apex assisted the county in developing the government requirements in the county's wind energy ordinance. This naturally raised my suspicions for potential conflicts of interest. So I critically review the ordinance in several areas where there is inadequate county oversight, which could result in lawsuits against the county and harm the county residents. In my limited time, I will focus on low frequency or low, infrasound, often called low frequency noise, which is the frequency below 20 Hz. Although called noise and sound is low human hearing and is spelt as pressure waves, not heard, infrasound is not to be confused with the turbine blade swish noise, which is a... The county wind energy ordinance currently has no inaudible noise requirements. But wind turbines most assuredly do produce harmful infrasound. Certain frequencies between 1 and 20 Hz causing organs in the human body to resonate or vibrate. Symptoms range from instability, headaches, and indigestion to chest pain, fatigue, vertigo, psychiatric, and neurological disturbances. A military study discusses infrasound for riot control, causing disorientation, vomiting, bowel spasms, and incapacitation. Furthermore, inaudible low frequencies travel farther than audible ones and low frequency noise emanates in all directions. A Finnish study measured infrasound from wind turbines last April, 40 to 60 kilometers from the turbines. That's 30, 25 to 37 miles. Other studies show that infrasound in mountainous terrain can travel farther than it does in flat land, where the Finnish study was conducted. In summary, infrasound is harmful to people and animals, travels much farther than audible sound, and it is produced by wind turbines. I request the county wind energy ordinance be amended to include infrasound measurement following the 2016 IEEE standard for wind turbine aerial acoustic noise measurement techniques. Also, that the ordinance state peak infrasound level allowed and provide strong deterrent penalties for violating any low frequency noise requirements added to this ordinance. I will leave this information with you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next. Next speaker will be Tenny Mudge in the DGB.
Thank you very much for your time. You've been a gentleman. I greatly appreciate it. My name is Tenny Mudge. I live on Pullan Road in Lexington, Virginia. I reside in Rockbridge, but live closer to Bartlett than to Lexington. I respectfully share a public comment with you today. You are smart people. Please do all your homework on the proposed changes put forth by Apex. There is a reason why, for over two and a half years since the permit by rule was issued, that Rocky Forge has no private sector buyer for the project. The state came in to bail out Rocky Forge as a project that cannot be economically or environmentally justified. Bartlett's mountain ridges are not renewable. Green is not green if it's not done right. It is of significant concern that the PBRDQ Section 2 methodology states to fulfill the requirements of the Code of Virginia 10.1-1197.6, B7, the applicant. Shelfend up pre-construction wildlife field surveys within the disturbance zone. The regulations state that these surveys have a shelf life of one to three years depending on species. If no state-listed species is found, this is called a negative survey. The required breeding bird survey for Rocky Forge was submitted as a negative survey by Western Ecosystems Technology on July 31, 2015. For birds, a negative survey is valid for just one to two years depending on species. This survey was completed over four years ago and has been expired for two years. We all know anything can happen in nature in four years, especially in the designated wildlife quarter, one of the last intact east-west migratory pathways for wildlife between the Forest and Alagans and the Blue Ridge Systems in Virginia. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, this survey is invalid and it must be redone. The longer blades of the proposed turbines have a 58% larger sweep than the shorter blades. The larger turbines would increase the adverse impacts to bats, eagles, all alien species, water quality, and real estate values. And for what? CO emissions from the construction of industrial wind is not clean or green and will never compensate by the energy that they might produce. It's already been stated that three communities, communities not unlike Bartlett and lawsuits against Apex, these were board of supervisors that were trying to make good decisions. These communities are suffering. This is even more true since Apex has never done an installation high on a fragile ridge top. I encourage you to watch the YouTube video of Apex Vice President of Public Affairs, Dobby Wilson, where she talks about the recruiting element to identify people and motivate them. To add a two-year extension of cushion time as Apex describes to the SUP would be an egregious injustice. It is not what you agree to. It is not what you help public comment to. A no vote to the black line text conveniently supplied by Apex is a vote of leisureship for Bartlett. My last statement is, you are smart people. I know you're under a great deal of pressure as a strong and seen county. Do not be fast-tracked and pay them to a corner as Apex attempts to rewrite and resize your wind ordinance for Apex. The enormity of your actions cannot be understated and they extend far beyond our real county lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mudge. Next speaker is Alan Brown.
Alan Brown, Paul Road, Lexington, Virginia. Not either county, but my home, especially on a sunny day, would be in the shadow flicker on the turbines along with the woods. Any of you guys that ever spent time in the woods hunting or whatever, you know how sound travels in the mountains. These mortal sound studies, I mean, how they're done. If you can't do the same sound study in the mountains, you're a little hybrid. I can hear people two miles away talking in their garden all the time and everything great along the woods. I know this is not about stopping this. It's about amending it. I understand for the amount of money that's involved, I will see how you can do it. You've got so much pressure behind you to have them built by the governor, big business, and then all of them, you got to have. But I would ask that you don't make anything better. And you try to make enough rules that when the next rep off or when they come back and they want to put a hardcore somewhere else, you have, you can say no to them if you want to, instead of them suing you to make you put them in. Protect yourselves and protect your citizens. You guys in the sheriff department are the last, last defense that people have anymore. We can't count on the federal government anymore to protect us. They're in the big business too, too much. You guys ready? So please, please, do your best to understand when you really get involved with us and protect your citizens in the future when we're gonna build more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Miss, thank you. You have any more? Okay, well, that's the last speaker. I want to thank you all for coming out and for giving us your opinions on this and telling us how you feel. At this time, we'll have Mr. Charlie Johnson, Apex Clean Energy. He will give an update on Rocky Forge Wind Power Project.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for the time you gave for today. My name is Charlie Johnson and I develop the Apex Clean Energy. Apex Clean Energy is a no-battery company by trade. We acquire and develop new wind and solar projects. We finance and construct them. And we operate the payment for the life of the project as well. I can say on the map for you some assets we have around the country, including our own state here in Virginia, of wind and solar projects. We have taken to our mission to accelerate the shift to clean energy. And we've done that in our own state as well. And we're looking to bring more clean energy here to our backyard. A little bit about Apex. We started in 2009. Today, we can install about almost three gigawatts of renewable energy around the country. We're managing over $2 billion worth of assets in our operations facility and have a project pipeline of about 17 gigawatts. This is just a quick snapshot of the past few years of the projects that we've worked on different, on with different companies, whether it's IKEA, Google, the US Army, Walmart. So the Rocky Forge Wind, this project from the start has had a tremendous amount of public support. And we're very grateful for that. Outside of that, the environmental benefits alone are very significant CO2 offsets. This will be a domestic energy supply. Using our wind data on site, which we have four wind towers studying this data, we expect to be over 200,000 megawatt hours per year produced by this project. That's how we get to the 21,000 homes. Economic impacts are significant, including 20-plus million of state local taxes here in our Commonwealth. And we see this as a land conservation opportunity. And by using the land for wind turbines, you're conserving a lot of future variations as well. And lastly, the advanced development of the public project, we have received both approvals in the county and the state in the past. Both of those permits are in the pipeline and being put forward. Just a quick snapshot showing a lot of the project endorsers, whether it's the Sierra Club, Virginia Bear Hears Association, Virginia Deer Hears Association, to the Concerns for Clean Energy. We've been blessed with lots of coverage around the state and locally for this project. Shows some of the media coverage for the project. We have been on the front page at the wrong times. We've been covered by many different media outlets over the past few years. And going back well before the original approval, we've been trying to get information on this project. Some of the economic benefits, as some folks have stated before, we're looking at about 250-plus full-time employment jobs during construction. That is significant and it is temporary, but naturally, construction jobs are temporary by project. So we do see that as a big impact. And we see with a rip-off down effect, according to Mega Economics, up to $39 million we can get through, due to construction of this project. During operations, as stated, there will be significant state local taxes. We expect to see about seven permanent jobs at the wind project, working on the vacancy service. Some of the other benefits of the project, education are a big one for us. We host a lot of tours to our wind turbine projects around the country. We do see the opportunity to do that here. Potentially being the first one in Virginia, a lot of folks are gonna want to come see it. We see that as a benefit to Bartlett County as well. Some of the other opportunities we're looking at, the potential to utilize a project net tower within operations for radio coverage for iron and not some Bartlett. That is going to be ongoing discussion. We are looking for the operations team to see the feasibility for that. Another opportunity on the table, the way that is in discussion to consider, mountain biking recreation of some of the land, given that we've got a varied collection of these. So a little bit about the action development status. As I stated earlier, we have four wind towers on site. We have over 195 months of cumulative wind data from the site. That is how we come up with our estimates. And we even have third-party estimates that I use for financing to confirm our review. To date, we do have concurrence from the Fish and Wildlife Service for the risk to wildlife. They agree with the assessment that there is no major risk to raptors on the site and that the bird and bat, or succeeded with bats mitigation plan that we've submitted is sufficient to mitigate to that species. We do have concurrence, as I stated, from DEQ and strange receipts on the previous approval that will need to be modified for the taller turbines. And we've also demonstrated compliance with these zoning regulations here in Bartlett County, whether that's the third-party sound studies, the third-party shadow flicker, and third-party telecommunication studies to avoid interference from other regulatory agencies in the county. Lastly, on the status, we do have a signed interconnection agreement with PJN, who operates the queue or the transmission grid in this part of the country. They stated in our interconnection service agreement that we have the availability to put all 78.2 megawatts of energy on the grid at that location. That also includes, which currently gets mistaken, a separate availability of 10.1 megawatts of capacity rents, which is a different trading market than the energy market. So that's, we're all getting the confusion that that's the actual NCF that PJN thinks we're gonna produce, or we're actually significantly higher than that, including to the net rest factor. We're actually significantly higher than that. We expect to produce that project. One of the most recent milestones that some have mentioned tonight is the Power First Agreement. We're very excited to partner with the state of Virginia and have their support on this project. I think it fits well with the governor's mission. But we're also, we're also very excited just to have that partner to make this more than just a Bartlett community project and all the work we come up with in Virginia. So the request before you today, Apex has submitted two, or two applications to the county. As Mr. Lockery had mentioned, one is the text amendment for the submitting ordinance. And that is to allow for up to 680 feet tip heights for turbines. And they'd like to extend the permit for an extra two years. And on the project permit side, which is a separate application, we're asking for that height of 680 feet tip heights and an expiration of two years after the proven expiration. So why are we asking for that? Mr. Miles gave a pretty good explanation of how the market has trended over the last few years. And I'll turn it first towards the blue bar graph, which corresponds to the number of turbines and the megawatt rating of the turbines. So you can see on the left, the three-megawatt turbine, you would need 25 turbines to reach the 75-megawatt capacity of the project. Going all the way to the right side, if you use some of the US turbines up to 5.6 megawatts, we could do so with even fewer. So the point of this is to show that even though we're asking for 22 turbines, as well as asking for 680 feet, the chances of building 680 feet with 22 turbines is very low. If we were to build up to the tallest tip height, we would be using much fewer turbines. But we have to entertain flexibility given the market for turbines today. Here's a visual that was done by Hill Studio on the outer run-up. They are a skyscape architect and has done a study for the visual simulations in the past. On the top is the 25 turbines at a tip height of 550 feet. And the bottom is a proposed for 22 turbines, no more than turn two, at a tip height of no more than 680 feet. So that is showing, worst-case scenario in terms of what that many turbines at that height looks like. But you can tell it's really not that big of an optical difference. And that's, that's pictures taken from the closest neighbor to the project, who actually is a big supporter of the project. This is a visual, or a huge analysis of the project, showing kind of the region around the area. All of the red dots were assessed by Hill Studio for visibility of, and visual simulation, excuse me. So that has been a part of the application coming through. This is showing the same 680 feet at anywhere that you can see any part of the turbine. So the green within, goes all the way out past 15 miles, the green area is the place that we expect to build six turbines. The second request we have before you is the extension. Current permit expiration is January 2021. We expect to be commercially operational by the end of '21, but we're asking for two years, just for any cushion flow, given the schedule of these. And last of the four requests, which is not a zoning request, but Rocket Forge is expected to pay nearly $1 million to near one operations, to loan nearly 17 million over the life of the project, which a lot of folks have mentioned that. The five placeholder tax rate for wind farms was passed in 2017, and the original capital cost was how that placeholder wind farm tax rate came about. Since that time, capital costs have increased, and we're asking for the supervisors to formalize that placeholder tax rate at the equivalent tax revenue that we expect in 2016. For more information, we can have a website, and my contact information is on that, where I'm willing to answer questions. Both thank you in the future.
Any of the members of the board have any questions for, for Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Mark, your slides were probably not, I lost track when you were talking about capacity and 10.1 megawatts. How does that, how do you derive that type of capacity? So it's what it is, how much do I talk about?
It's capacity, it's the capacity market. So it's actually a day ahead or a few days ahead in market when you can bid into the market. If you know that you're going to be able to produce that energy during that timeframe, it wouldn't be hit. So for instance, if we knew that it was going to be windy three days, there's a different revenue source that you can bid into the market that, if there's a variation need, that PJM can pull that wind and buy that wind there. So it's a little different than just sending electricity that's being produced running, determining if it's running. It's a predictability, it's, it's working with the market in time to need on the grid. Is that a question?
It doesn't have to do with the infrastructure or raw locations to the, to the wind farms?
Yes, sir.
One of the speakers made a comment that there would not be sufficient wind, which in summer, now, would be 37.
Yes, sir. So traditionally, this, this area definitely does have stronger winds in the winter term. The production estimates that show up to, up to night are based on the wind resource data on the site over the last few years. And we have had a third-party review of that, which is one of the parts of financing projects that's been used. So the financiers, they're comfortable with that third-party review, put that $1 million to build it. That's, that's comforting for us as well.
Sir, any amendments presently to be stopped and slowing this project down?
There's always risk. There's a lot of pieces to put together to get to construction for this project. Anything from finalizing all the agreements with the landowners for access to the project, or working with financing parties to get the money together for purchasing turbines in time? This is one of the big pieces of it, the kind.
Do you have access to those sites right now?
Currently, we do not. We've, we've asked, we've got agreements with almost all the, with the landowners, and we are sending some of those currently. But we are hoping to close that out in the near, near future.
Charlie, do you, do you lease rightways or buy, buy property or both? How does that work?
So this is actually a V-dog rightway, Dagger Springs Road. So in some instances, we're doing easement, or the way to overhang someone's property as it goes on. And in other places where we're approving a road, V-dog would prefer actually pulling the land underneath, so we are purchasing a lane for that.
And how long is it typical lease?
Lease for a wind project, for the project or?
Yeah, your right-of-way leases.
It varies, it varies, depending on what was needed. Some of the longer-term ones are for the major terms, but we've got to do improvements to your wind script to make for the term. So it doesn't make sense to go back and reclaim all that back, just in case you had to access one of those later.
So, so if you had to decommission, would you have to go back and release?
No, so actually, if you decommission, it depends on, on the age of the turbines. But if you are decommissioning later in life, then a lot of the turbine components will be disposed, so they can be brought out as more pieces of this stuff.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your presentation. We are going to have to take a short recess.
Yeah, I, I, if you don't mind it.
It won't be long, but I hope you're fair enough. Attorney for the adjacent, Robert Yelvers, you still here? He's left. Robert Yelvers here, that's Jason. Okay, I just wanted to check, see if they had an agreement recently, most of the agreement.
Just a minute, we'll check to see if he's still here.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Hugh Williams?
He had to leave for another appointment with a client, but he, he, he just didn't like the, expressed the information that he had provided.
Okay, I was just trying to determine whether he had access, was close to having access, but this, Robert Yelvers just had a problem. He didn't know if he was anymore close.
The, the, the opinion that he expressed to me was that his clients are very far from having access or even having significant discussions on access, whether they tax.
Okay, thank you. And Charlie, are you still here? What is the tax, what is the tax rate that we're looking at now? What is the tax rate of the county?
So the tax rate that was passed a few years ago is 99 cents, the $100 value. And to keep that even apples to apples to the current capital cost, we expect up to $0.90.
Okay, it's gone from 99 to 90, that's because of the capital gains or the increase in capital. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else have any comments before we get into this?
I didn't hear Mike.
There are far from, well, far from the, the, those that have access. Anyone else? All right, if not, we'll go into Agenda Item Number 13, Request for the Board to Consider Repose Zoning Orders, Section 8, Apex Clean Energy's Project. Mr. Phil.
Thank you, good evening, Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening.
There are two separate but related requests for consideration on your agenda. And if it is suitable to the members of the board, I'll provide a brief presentation on Agenda Item 13, and then pause for consideration and questions on that, if that sounds agreeable. So Item 13 on your agenda is for consideration of the amendments to the county's zoning ordinance. Now, as Mr. Lockaby has explained, zoning ordinance does give a mechanism by which the zoning ordinance can be amended, which starts with the power of a petition to be considered by the law as board members. So you know, the Office of Planning is going to receive this petition by Apex Clean Energy and property owner Jerry Greeley, seeking amendments to the code. So the action being requested, the office may need our consent to deny or to table the request. And a part of the beneficial to spell out the procedures that come into play with any of those particular actions. So if the granting of the petition was granted, it would put into motion the following actions. The amendments would be thoroughly reviewed by staff, and then they would be treated in accordance with the procedures for a board or planning commission initiated text amendment. So that's important, because staff may concur with the proposed amendments, they may recommend revised amendments, make a recommendation against the amendments, or some combination. Staff recommendations then go to the planning commission for consideration. The planning commission then holds a public hearing on the proposed amendments as presented or as revised by the commission. Then the planning commission makes a recommendation to the board supervisors. The board then receives a report by staff, hold your own public hearing, and take action if you deem it appropriate to do so at that time. So that is if the, if the action this evening were to recommend the amendments or to send the amendments to the planning commission, that is the procedure that would follow administratively. If the request for the text amendments to go to the planning commission were denied this evening, the proposed amendments would not be considered by the planning commission at all, at the end. The board also has the opportunity to table the request for consideration at a future board meeting. Under the county code states that there is no time limit for consideration of these amendments. Want to keep in mind, when we talk about the text amendments, that they're applicable county-wide for any future project. They're not specific to any particular project. So if the product, the amendments were referred to the PC, the particular content of those items for consideration are a request for the turbines to be taller than the height limit that is currently existing in the county code, to increase the maximum height for substation interconnection points, and then also to revisions to the special exception expiration timeframe. These are all components of the county code that would apply to any utility scale wind ordinance now or in the future in the county. Wanted to provide a brief background of the history of the origination of the utility scale wind ordinance. So prior to January 2015, staff spent over six months conducting research to provide information to inform the planning commission and the board supervisors about utility scale wind. At that time, staff researched every utility with wind ordinance in the state, some national ordinances, and utilized a model ordinance drafted by a state panel of local government, state government, industry, academia, and environmental advocates that was chaired by the Director of DEQ, David Taylor. We also sought feedback and input from JMU Center for the advancement of sustainable energy, specifically from Director Jonathan Mouse, who you heard from. The ordinance was crafted to provide the opportunity for the board to consider utility scale wind by SEP in A1 and SC zoning districts, again, by special exception permit only. When we went through these series of work sessions over the course of six months, we provided an overview of the systems with the planning commission and the board. The planning commission and the board also visited each bridge facility in West Virginia. And after that time, we held a public forum to receive feedback with representatives from DEQ, JMU in participation. At all of those particular work sessions and with the public forum, we did make changes to the ordinance throughout the process. And in the end, the result of the ordinance was really what I talk about, a multi-cheered regulatory approach. What I mean by that is that there are particular provisions and different components of the ordinance, as well as the conditions that the board imposed which regulate a particular project. So first, the zoning districts apply. Secondly, the supplemental regulations around a series of components which apply to any wind project in the county. Thirdly, the process for which the SEP is considered, there's a series of additional requirements that must be considered on a site-by-site basis. These specific considerations are reviewed then by an independent consultant who provides feedback to the county in regards to the specific details of the project. This leads to the fourth component of the SEP, which are the conditions imposed by the board. In 2016, the board imposed 17 additional conditions over three pages, to give you some magnitude of the complexity of those conditions. The ordinance at that time was intended to strike a balance between setting a standard applying to any facility across the county, while certain site-specific considerations are left to be regulated by the decisions that the board imposed. This is consistent with special exception permits across different zoning districts. It allows for a balanced oversight to ensure projects, if approved, are a good fit for the community and the surrounding properties that have the potential to be impacted. I do want to briefly make a link to an additional land reaction that was submitted to our office, you heard this this evening, which is a change in the existing conditions that regulate the SEP's weather. That project involves changes, and the application involves changes that cannot be changed until and unless the zoning ordinance is amended. So in summary, important to re note, the request does not change the code. It also does not necessarily send the code changes as suggested by the applicant in your pocket to the EC for consideration. The request is specific to put into motion a process by which staff would analyze and present recommendations to the planning commission, utilizing the public hearing process, who would then make a recommendation to you all, who are in file authority to amend the code. Again, following a public hearing before you all. You also have the opportunity, in keeping with process and procedures, to specify a timeframe for the planning commission to provide you a recommendation, you should be sure for any items then. So I believe I will conclude this portion of the presentation for Agenda Item 13, and I would be happy to receive any questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from any of the members of the board, Dr. Lethem?
Mr. Philton, how, how much due diligence do we have to redo as far as permitting and studies? You just showed a great blinding of work that was done last time. Do you have to go back through all of them?
Specific to the text amendments, we would do, we would do our due diligence in researching industry standards and researching that type of information to make a determination on what, what number, if any, we would recommend to the planning commission, and, and what those amendments look like. In terms of the special exception process, which is a different process entirely, we would, we had not reviewed the entire special exception permit application at this time, awaiting your feedback. So we would want to go back through that and look through that again, and do all the due diligence on all the studies, and make sure that they were read, that when they needed to be read on, that they were.
Okay.
Yes.
In Claude's brush, Charlie had spoken earlier, but you know, there's a lady that brought up the fact that the, the bats and the other animals, that it's one to two years, or two to three years, that they have to go back through and do the studies again. Any thoughts on that process, that true results?
So I will, I'll defer to Mr. Johnson on his process for the permit by rules, which is the environmental studies conducted for the states. But you also have the opportunity, as, as you look through the special exception permit conditions, and with the ability to look at the ordinance, to ensure that you all have a level of comfort that everything is up to date and that meets the requirements for you all to make your informed decision.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So your question on the breeding bird study, that was my question?
Yes.
So DEQ has the ultimate say. I can double-check with that specific study, it's been a little while since I've looked at it. But my understanding is that it was not an absence survey, that breeding birds were found, therefore, it's not subject to your control.
So it has a negative study, so it forms a negative study?
So I'm, I'm just using the term that absence, presence, absence, same as positive, I guess. But my understanding is that it was not a negative or absence of, of those species, so those are still an active survey. But that's ultimately DEQ's idea.
Okay, thank you.
If this would come to fruition, I have listened to wind farms in West Virginia, top people up there. They said that they did studies on the animals that were killed, the birds, bats, eagles, whatever, that they would go out each week, once a month, or once a week, I don't remember what it was, and try to find the thing that had been killed, and they made a list of that, and they use it for records. Do you all do anything like that to confirm, you know, if any, if a fowl was to be killed?
Yes, sir, yeah, that's fully laid out in the mitigation plan for operations.
What are the things that you were talking about, the like, possibly Kevin's and mine, like, these are included, well, in that, that's to help?
Not to my knowledge, that's kind of separate from the project, that's out of our night.
No, you guys call it.
No, sir.
And I do know that on that mountain, you have trails up there where they can drive in four-wheelers, bear hunt up there, deer hunt. Would that interfere with any of that? Would that interfere with any of that, would the off limits or the posted, how would that work?
So the main fencing for the project is a normal substitution, and that's by federal requirements. The turbines themselves are actually completely enclosed, so we can walk right up to the base of the turbine. It would not be fenced off there on the off limits. So I, we do not expect that to impact, outside of the construction here, of course, but we do not expect that to impact the recreational work.
Any other comments from the members of the Board? Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Dr. Stan Orville? Mr. Clinton, you thought about that there? Okay. Then, I need to look at here is determine what you want to do with this. Dr. Bailey, this is in your case?
Yes, sir. Uh, you know, we've heard a lot of comments, pro and con, about this, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think in, in light of the due diligence that's required, I see it being fair for this to move forward to the Planning Commission for further review and study. Uh, so I would make the motion that it go in that direction.
I will second that, but it's with a, with capital. In, in this situation, I hope I can, and you can count the police helping this situation because I'd like to defer item number fourteen, secondary further discussion, and advise the staff, the council, that they will form the text amendments for the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission. Thus, looking at some of the consultant studies, which would include maybe technical reviewing, the technical viability, new project, the review of financial viability of the project, environmental impacts, comments or suggestions that the consultant may have, that the consultant believes would make the project even better, some of the things we can do. And you know, you hear the, I, I don't know anything about this infrastructure, I, that's kind of interesting, but the analysis and impact on land values, maybe usability and price there. I don't know if there's very, very much that, but I'm certain enough to have a value that third-party considers. Would that be a part of that section that the Planning Commission comes?
Text amendment review?
Yes, sir. It will go into the coming back class.
What would come to you, come back to you with the text amendment review, all, we would probably not go through all of that process, the reason being that all of those factors are very site-specific. So what we would probably go through is focus more on the, what is the best practice, especially elsewhere in Virginia and in other states that have these ordinances, see where these ordinances have gone in the last four years, coming up on five years, because they have the changes, just like there are the changes in the technology, there are the changes in how a lot of governments regulate these, both in Virginia and elsewhere. Or, at least the ordinances that they use. Once you start looking at a site-specific application, then you start going down into the exact technical aspects of that. And it might be that, when you have to get on the text amendment, that's in place indefinitely. And it might be that the next wave of technology makes the ridge up here a green field, be a perfect place to put wind turbines, and then we would do the same site-specific analysis, and then you could apply reasonable conditions to that site-specific application right there. So we would probably treat them differently, have a consultant. We might engage a consultant for a relatively small advisory amount, just basically Kirk, Nicole, have somebody to call and ask questions to, but we wouldn't have a beautiful analysis of application of the wind for SEP.
And, and so I really think we should further back this. So I would agree, thank you, Dr. Stan Orville.
Mr. Clinton, do you have any comments?
I could just, just hold it. I can answer your question. It's, um, I'm not real sure, not real sure how to, how to phrase this. Actually, we're moving past, I thought we would, so if I may, sir, there, I know there's motion on the table, and I don't know what inappropriate this is, but I have a related series of questions, staff, your counsel. Is that okay with me, the notion, it's related to the topic?
Sure.
And I gotta admit, despite me, maybe I'm being a dear one here, but you kind of have to, I don't know. Anyway, we, we need to look at the nuances of things like this, because it's certainly an important issue. So, Mr. Johnson, I'm going to put you on the spot. So your agent, Adina Patterson, who, your, the attorney who made the request for the, uh, for the text amendment, said the following, and it just kind of goes to, you know, I kind of think, well, it's, you know, it's not a lot of substance here, but doesn't have meaning. I'll feel a whole lot more comfortable if I know how you feel about this. This is in his letter, I'll cover it there first. He's, he, in his third paragraph, he's, he's explaining the reason that we're here again. Yep. Why, why didn't this thing go forward back in two thousand sixteen? So he says in part, "Well, while Rocky Forest was optimistic in two thousand sixteen that installation and startup operation could be completed within five years, that time has quickly passed, and more time is needed." Well, that's pretty shabby, you know, I mean, that sort of implies we lost back the time. I mean, it was a big deal, you know, the county and, and citizens had a lot of angst about everything, and we have money to put into it, as you did, there's no doubt that you all are taking a risk, but to just say, well, the proposal, time just got away from us, that's, if that's the best I could come up with, then I wonder why we're here. So then he kind of tries to, to ameliorate that, he says, "This in part was because the project was the first wind project in Virginia to receive its, from it by rule." I think I heard Nicole say something about that, don't know what that means. But anyway, being the first project by rule in Virginia, he says, "Rocky Forest felt responsible to educate and carefully work through all the aspects of the project." And again, I'm, I'm parsing things, I have, but I mean, that kind of implies that Rocky Forest wouldn't have done that if it hadn't been the first project by rule. Do you, can you understand what else might, it does feel a little uncomfortable.
Yes, sir. And I apologize for, for how you're reading that, that was not the intent, was to brush it off, it was getting way from time. There was a lot of work that went on in the background after the county process, and everything from reaching out to your power buyers, to how you came as a power buyer to be comfortable with purchasing renewables in Virginia. In the case of a government entity, that takes a very long time to do that, and we were hard at work with the governor's office for trying to get to that point that we were able to announce in October. So it's not for lack of effort, and I apologize for that coming off that way, that was not the intention. But, and, and I can certainly speak that, you know, I'm proud to work for APEX, and I'm proud of the fact that I feel like I've been educated very well. During the last primary process, my cell phone was directly connected to the line on the website, so my cell phone rings when someone calls with questions. We have since reinstated that instead of having to go to the voicemail, so my cell phone does ring now too. I can't always answer it because I have meetings too, but I'll certainly get back to your answers.
Okay. Or if by rule, really what, on a gross, gross percentage of effort basis, I mean, how much would that increase your, your work? Was it ten percent increase or?
Well, this, this state permit by rule is the environmental permit to a sharpener rate of wind project.
Which didn't exist in two thousand sixteen?
No, it didn't. We received a permit by rule in twenty seventeen, following the county process. So one of those stipulations is you have approval from the county before you can file through your statement. So that's why this is crucial. But it, it is a significant effort, and you have years of study on site for environmental impact assessment from, from the state. And we had to do historic resource assessment, third D H R as a part of that, as well as any kind of plant species and basic species studies through the discernment as well. So it's a pretty significant undertaking of on-site work for that project, for that permit. Okay. Thank you. Sir.
Okay. Any other comment? I do agree with Dr. Bailey. I would love to see it at the original contract, at the original height, but I understand that technology does change, and when it changes, you know, your equipment changes too. There's been a lot of time and energy put into this, and as Bailey said, I would like to see her forward to the Planning Commission for review, and with that, I'll take, we do have a motion in a second on this, for.
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion as the maker would entertain, but.
Yes, sir.
Let me try to think what this one said. It's a little bit picking up on what, what Lockey said. This whole process, there was nobody involved, it's pretty irregular in that, I think if there's anybody, in that we are considering a text amendment at the same time that we have before, as the only last project, and we're all in, that's, that's on. The fact that both the technicals and managers could have filed and approved the text amendment, it implies approval of the project, and that makes me kind of nervous. Does that make sense, everybody? If it doesn't, you see the difference, because it is a non-adoption. But, I mean, my concern, positive or negative, is that whatever we do with text amendment revision will prejudice one way or the other, the actual young life project. And I was just still confident we had, we admitted the, the motion in a way that ensures that it's impossible to prejudice the young life project, as an organization.
So you're saying to, when I said for the staff and council to prepare for the Planning Commission, um, we've no, no prejudice, is what you're saying?
If, if, if we approve it going forward, we kind of know what it's all about, we kind of know the project itself.
Right.
And I don't, I don't think we should send a message that we approve or disapprove the project, because that's all we're, we're just, it's more of a procedural then, to revise the text ordinance that we can proceed, and that doesn't mean that we're approving the project itself. That's what we're, that concerns me, no thing concerns me picking up on, but, so Lockey said, you kind of suggested that the process be thorough and, and rigorous, enhanced, I think, and if you meant to say that, but to me, given, given the visibility of this project, which not much of a project, we probably need to go far afield for some expert advice, maybe build the, more, more, absolutely, procedures, and trust.
That's certainly something that we would, would be taking into account. I, I certainly know that this, we, we spend, I certainly know that Mrs. Pendleton spent a lot, my, my speakers, bad, um, I certainly know that Mrs. Pendleton spent a lot more time on this than she would, or averaged change in the number of pendons on the property. Uh, but, uh, absolutely, I, I don't know that she was bashful about reaching out to consultants as necessary in the process.
So this thing doesn't bother me, just, this places, another usual project in Virginia especially, I just want to tell ourselves what it is like to have. So, like to be of amendment, I guess I would, would agree, amend the motion to, to clearly state that approval of the text amendment, as I imply, approval or disapproval, this approval of the only last project. Is that perfect? Is that?
In fact, I would advise that that be absolutely clear, the text amendment has absolutely no impact.
Yes, right, yeah, that's, I was going to.
Uh, in court during the last proceeding.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's a separate decision, so.
So, so, so the motion, as I understand it, is nothing more than to consider the text amendments that have been presented to your office. It's not an approval of those text amendments in any, in any way. So however it needs to be worded to substantially support Mr. Clinton's idea, as well as move this thing to your office for review.
I'll second that.
We have to move on the amendment first, right? And if that's, oh, you said.
But I, I can only defer to fourteen, so text basically comes down.
About five minutes, maybe, the man who, Dr. Bailey, ninety-six seconds.
I thought that Dr. Bailey said that it was a friendly amendment.
Oh, okay, it's okay.
Is that right, Dr.?
Is that, is that?
And that, the second, this friendly amendment, the second degree, therefore, the, the clarification of the text amendment is a separate decision which does, has no prejudice toward the SEP, that being part of the motion. That's, that is now part of the main motion that you originally made, and you are now prepared to vote whenever somebody moves to the floor or call a question.
Call a question, yes. All right. Any, all the flavors, the guy?
Ah, go ahead.
All opposed? In motion, carry on.
Now, did you, you said, before, you, you, so.
So number fourteen is the question.
Sir, so Chairman, without the text amendments, we'll, we'll do our due diligence and procure a consultant. We won't need to take that, the application of the special exception permit, which talks about the consultant. We won't need to take action on that because that will not move forward until the text amendment is approved, so, um, if that's agreeable to you all, then I, I will present, and that will come back to you all at such time that the text amendments will come back. So I'm agreeable to the Board?
Okay. All right, well, the next agenda item, which is agenda item number fifteen, consideration of the state's performance agreements, we have H B M Incorporated, and Mr. Biden, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the audience. Uh, the agenda item that you have for you relates to a letter that is in your packet from Constellation Brands requesting a fifteen-month extension on their Commonwealth Opportunity Fund State and Senate Performance Agreement, uh, that Constellation Brands, or rather called RUMAR, which is Valuable Point, entered into with the county in two thousand sixteen. Uh, the request is to extend the performance date to meet performance targets in the performance agreement by fifteen months, or to take the performance date from December thirty-one of this year to, to the end of March two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the specific economic development targets that are in the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement include the capital investment of forty-seven point eight million dollars, the creation and maintenance of one hundred thirty-three production jobs, and the creation and maintenance of forty-five tasting room retail positions. Now mixed within the performance targets and economic development agreements with RUMAR, which operates Valuable Point, uh, we know that Constellation Brands finalized their acquisition of Valuable Point after these agreements were signed, and Constellation Brands has subsequently closed the tasting room in September of this year, and they announced, uh, two weeks ago, the sale of Valuable Point to, uh, an independent buyer in Chicago. Uh, so that begs the question as to what Constellation Brands has in store for, uh, the facility here in Vado Pass. Uh, they have conveyed to us, and I believe that their letter also speaks to this, that this facility is their primary beverage production facility in the United States. Uh, they also own brands of Corona, Modelo, and Cipico, that those are made in Mexico. This is their primary U.S. production facility. Um, their letter also speaks to the tasting room, and that there is the possibility of a reuse or reopening of the tasting rooms sometime during twenty twenty for Constellation Brands products that are being developed and rolled out. Um, so I want to stop there, knowing that I haven't covered all the details and asked for any.